Everybody, please join me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everybody have a chance to review the agenda?
Yeah, I reviewed the agenda, moved to approve.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
I did. I moved to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Did everybody have a chance to review the vouchers?
Yeah, I just went poring over those this morning.
What's the next one, Jim?
I would move.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. Is there any further discussion? So there's two charges for long buildings, if that goes for them.
It is. That's, you know, we're running checks weekly now, and so you will see sometimes a duplicate vendor. It's not duplicate payments, but the reason we're running weekly is to try to avoid duplicate payments.
Yeah, I've seen that in the book, it was two.
But we still send them in one envelope. I'm gonna start exploring a little bit. We do pay one vendor by ACH right now. And continued rising cost of postage. I think we're gonna explore a few more ACH payments.
Any further discussion on vouchers? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Here we have the Chugwater lease agreement for office space for the Black County Sheriff's Department down in Chugwater. I think we've all had this email to us. Do you guys have any questions or concerns about this?
I didn't.
Again, this is the agreement for the sheriff.
For the sheriff to have office space there.
Okay, yeah.
It was, it was emailed out to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see, yeah, anything.
You guys good by?
I'm good.
I moved to approve the leasing agreement with the town of Chugwater.
I'd second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the leasing agreement with the town of Chugwater. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Has this been with Doug that long?
No, Chugwater approved it, and then honestly, it's been on me.
I think they, they signed it in April.
Yeah, well, okay, I didn't get it till June. Then I didn't get it to you till August. We just wanna make sure we're not, you know, acting rashly. Very good. Thanks. Conservatives, her reasoning.
That's right.
Measure government approach.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to County Treasurer. Good morning, Christie. Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to be here. Things are on track. We got our sales tax collections in. We also paid out the leftover sales tax from the, well, the overage of the sales tax from 2019 question. We have the checks written. Malcolm has agreed to attend some of the city meetings with us. Tiffany, to go ahead and give them that, go over any questions that they have, might have about the specific purpose question and how they can actually use that specific money that we're, that we're paying them. We have the new director of revenue, Danny, and he's gonna be the new director. And he's the nicest guy, answers questions, so I think that would be nice.
Used to be that division director for excise tax.
Yeah, he's just, he's just a very nice guy, so I think it'll be very approachable if you have a question. He understands that you have a customer on the other side of the counter waiting for an answer, and so we'll put some time into getting that. He helped me out with the lodging tax, starting in June. The lodging tax had an additional percentage going to it, and so the June collections, I did not catch that the lodging tax should have had an additional fee attached to it. So if you looked at that spreadsheet that I sent, it says that there was an adjustment made. So you'll see that coming out of that 550, or the 558 account. This, the fiscal year, the state fiscal year spreadsheet, 2024, 2025.
I was gonna put it up in my head, but.
So you'll just see that, yeah, just go back on page.
Oh.
Yeah.
So they give it a different payment now as well. And so I didn't catch that until the lodging board reached out to me and asked why it was different. And so I needed to correct that payment, and then it was soon enough. It only affected the June payment. The July payment was dispersed correctly. And so, so yeah, that's why the, all the notations on that page. So besides that, Danette got me the numbers for the property taxes. We'll go ahead, and it looks like those will probably be built out right then. About one day, Labor Day, Labor Day, Labor Day. Everybody builds at the same time, and we all use the same printer, so. So it just depends where we.
So usually, our logistics or whatever.
So you just sort of try to slide it in. They say seven to 10 business days, but I think, I would say the majority of the families use that same printer, so.
Printer don't fail me now.
It gets like, come on, you just try to do your timing correctly.
Totally related. What does S/B mean?
Should be.
Okay. Very good. I'm an idiot.
No, I'm sorry, I use that on everything, and it's, it's not nice to use, a shortcut that.
No, it's perfect. I, I think it's great.
So, yeah, lots of those acronyms. I'm like, I don't have any idea what you're talking about, so I'm glad that you asked.
Most of my go, I can try.
Yes. Looks like those text messages you can't read.
Yeah, I just guess, and then sometimes I should not guess.
I have to ask them, what's that mean?
Yeah, why?
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
Not now.
I need to thank both Christie and Danette for being available, like, on a Saturday night when I have a question. They always answer questions.
Yeah, it was, it was good.
Sometimes we're the customer, right?
You are the customer.
I got Christie out of my yard going.
Yeah, it worked really good. I was, I was looking for a reason.
She waves C down.
Yeah, I'm like, somebody call green, green.
And before that, it was Danette on a late night, I think.
Yeah. And the work she.
Thanks for that.
Anytime.
Any more questions for Christie? Thanks, Christie.
Thank you.
Christie, thank you again. Here we have our assessor on now. I gotta get my hand warmed up.
Good morning.
Need a new pen?
That looks dangerous. Yeah, that looks dangerous.
So we had a tax cancellation. This was the event that we discussed. Ian asked what was gonna happen if we had one that went on the tax sale, and this is, this is that situation. So there was a property that went on the tax sale, and Christie came to my office and asked me to get a legal description for that property. Malcolm, can you pull up an account on the mapping?
Which one?
1823, please. It might not come up actually, because you can see.
On 11th Street?
So that.
I should stop asking questions about these things. It seemed like they pop up.
Wasn't it at the end?
No, actually, go back over to your left. It's this piece right here. So when Christie came to me and asked me for a legal description, he clicked on this one. So the piece was actually kind of just like this. It was just part of the road. So she asked for a legal description, so we started pulling deeds to get that legal description. And turns out that that little sliver was a leftover piece from a much larger parcel. Numerous acres. It used to include the mobile home park, and it had just been pieced off throughout the years. So we're trying to piece together this legal description, what it would be, and then the more that we dug and we mapped, we discovered that that little sliver actually belonged to the piece that it's included, highlighted in yellow there now. So we needed to do a tax cancellation, and it was Bud and Betty Dowers' property. And Terry Stevenson is the one that had purchased that on the tax lien sale. So we canceled the tax bill back to 2018, when he first acquired that property in the tax sale, and canceled through 2024. And then rebated that for a total of $130.48.
How much was that?
$130.48.
Thank you.
And after that, I got a list from Christie of all the other properties on the tax lien sale and went through every single one of those to make sure that they are all good to go.
You need a surveyor on staff, it sounds like.
It would be handy. I'm very thankful. Our mapper is usually fairly quick, you know, maybe three or four day turnaround. Just very thankful that he can draw those things. I drew a lot, but it's just nicer to have somebody who's that's their job.
Was that sliver included with somebody else's?
Yes, that piece that it's in with now.
And before that, it was where?
The sliver. It was just a leftover piece, so it started off with, I don't know, like 40 acres, and then they sold numerous times, and it would have just been like, this is what's left over after we've split and sold numerous different ways.
I just forgot, I heard, did they attach to that property?
Yeah, I don't really know for sure what, what happened along the way. That property had been in the family for a very, very long time.
So is the tax cancellation for $130.48, 2018 to 2024, to Bud and Betty Dowers?
The tax cancel, yes, the property was in their name, so we canceled it, and then we rebated to Terry Stevenson, since he's the one that had purchased the tax lien sale. Am I saying that correctly?
And the tax lien, yeah.
What, in 2018?
Terry bought it in 2018.
And she had also, she had contacted our office about, she wanted to just abandon it and give it back to the city. She didn't want to go through it to have it surveyed and that kind of stuff to find out the exact exact description of it. And so they had moved long ago, and she had just said, take it, the county have it or whatever, so that's why it went on the tax lien sale. Because it was part of their mobile home park, and it, like Danette said, it was just the road. And my legal description was just like 12 feet or part of the town, so.
Part of the northeast, southeast, whatever.
So, remember it is. By just looking at it, you wouldn't have ever known if there was a problem, and like, and that explained to me, when you draw by hand, you get that there could be a little piece of it left, but when you have professional, professional tools and all the things that they have with that, then you can see that.
You can still throw a rock from one end to the other.
You can still go ahead. Is there a rock? You certainly can, so, yeah.
Okay, that's the only one you have today?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
It's amazing what you find when you got cleaned up.
And if you.
You know, this is what goes.
Yeah.
You know, it's something by the end, it sold this off, what about this little piece?
So.
Yeah, it's one of those things, like, you don't like to find stuff like this, but you're also happy to find stuff like this, so that way you can get it cleaned up, because you don't really know until you, especially if somebody's owned a piece of property for years and years and years. Then you don't really know until you have to draw it out to say, oh gosh, this is, something's not quite right here.
Well, Betty was an elementary teacher when I was in school. I told you how long ago that was.
So Bud, it would be to cancel Bud and Betty's, Bud and Betty's, excuse me, taxes between 18 and 24, and rebate to Terry Stevenson. So I would move. See how this works. I so move. If you wanna do as presented, then I usually detail out the. Danette's. Yeah, I'd do it. I so move, but let's go. I move to cancel the taxes for Bud and Betty, Bud and, my gosh. Bud and Betty Dowers for taxes 2018 to 2024, and to rebate $130.48 to Terry Stevenson.
That's, that sounds great.
That's for Malcolm.
Malcolm will change it.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to cancel Bud and Betty Dowers tax from 2018 to 2024 for $138.48, and rebate that to Terry Stevenson.
She is. It's a whole thing. It's hard.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I don't have to sign anything?
Oh, I thought you'd already, I thought you gave them to me. Oh, okay.
Just if you.
Oh, gosh, I thought your hands were already done.
I'm gonna be out in life.
And you guys get stamps, send them to stamp through it.
That's what I was looking at.
I know. It's gotta be.
You can bring it back in a week, whenever, whenever you.
Need a gatorade.
Yeah, thank you. Excuse me.
Do you wanna take a look at those? Before we move into Jim's, that's our little head schedule. We'll look at these. Signed one on yesterday.
Okay, we'll go. No, no, but it'll be perfect, thank you.
How many of them is there?
Five. Yeah, five. My mom's having surgery right now, and I just got a call from the hospital.
Ring in. Can I take about two minutes?
Yes. I'll be right back.
Take your time.
Is there a date used in these?
I like this. Glad this dude go back for 100 years. Thanks for that.
Sure. You got your priorities right.
Well. Sounds like, sounds like they're gonna load her up, take her to Casper. That's what it sounded like.
Jim, go ahead and get started.
Okay. I guess the first thing we'll start with is the HVAC on this, on this building to have a a system that was dripping water out of the overflow pan. Come to find out that, so the condensation is in the bottom of the unit, and it, when that fills, it drips into an overflow pan. There's no drain on that overflow pan at all. There is a sensor on it. The sensor failed. I do have one ordered. It should be here very soon, and we'll get that put on. That sensor then alerts me. It shuts the system completely down and sends me an alert to my computer. So I know there's a problem with it. But the problem was now, if I can explain this right. The unit was pulling in only about 1,600 CFM when it was putting out like 3,000 CFM.
How many ton units?
I can't answer that one. And so long, Matt, the tech on it said, no rule of thumb is it should be putting out, or bringing back in at least what it's putting out, if not more. So that was the problem. It was starving for air, which wouldn't allow it to drain, because it was pulling air from every place that it could get air.
How could it starve for air?
It was putting suction on the drain. Because it's only pulling in 1,600, and it's putting out 32, or 3,000. So it wasn't getting enough air.
That's my question, why?
The, there's only one filter to it.
Okay.
Only one spot for return air on that unit. So he wants to put another return air to it, so it won't happen again. So it gets more air on the return side.
So are the, isn't there, how many more systems are up there?
Uh, there's eight.
Why are they all the same way, or are they? This one's the only problem.
This one's the only problem that we have found. He said it, he felt like it was just a design error or whatever. He did go ahead and put a hole in the duct to put another one in. And as soon as he punched a hole in that duct, you could hear the whole unit just, it was a relief. It was giving more air. It started to, everything started to drain.
So the ductwork on the intake side, on the return air side
Yes.
was not substantial enough.
Right.
To where it could actually work at its potential of CFM in, CFM out.
Right.
From the get-go.
Right.
Okay. So that's an HVAC problem that goes back to when they engineered the system.
Correct.
Okay. Here's my next question. That being what it is, these units, that the standard throughout the industry for years is a four-ton AC unit at 30% humidity will generate between five and 10 gallons of water a day. That ain't just between eight and five. That's a 24-hour cycle, because people don't have to be in the building for that to run. Having said that, I find that that was an issue and should have never been, but now we gotta deal with it. If you, if they've got a system that has sensors on it, that's supposed to alert your phone, and those already have got a failure rate, there needs to be a redundancy backup. You've got the pans underneath, or what, about four inches deep? Give or take?
Yeah.
Okay. Having said that, those pans are just gonna be cesspools, and there needs to be a redundant drain tied to each one of those and run to a vent with, a vent stack, which is then gonna turn that vent into a wet vent. If it's a dry vent now, if you dump water in it from that level, it'll turn it into a wet vent. That's just the simple physics of it.
Right.
I would think to prevent this from happening down the road, whether it's a CFM issue, whether it's a sensor issue, whether it's a condensate pump issue, I don't care. Those things need to have a redundant drain on them to prevent further damage. Would you agree?
I agree.
And what would it take to facilitate that?
Not much.
Okay.
That's, that's what I, when I talked to Steve the other day, that's what I.
Yeah, we talked about putting a drain on.
Get a drain above, above the sensor so the sensor still goes off and alerts ya.
Yep.
But put it high in, or low enough that it doesn't overflow that pan.
Yep. Now you don't wanna use those redundant drains any more than you have to because those are the ones that plug up.
Right.
Because algae builds up in them, you get sludge, you get just plain old dust.
Right.
And when you have a condensate pump that cycles, it'll pump out however much is in that container, all in one flush. Until it, the float goes, it's, it's just like having a sewer pump in your basement with float on it. Some pump, it's the same thing. Except it just pumps that condensate water out.
Right.
Relying on the redundancy of the drip drains, you would call it, you don't wanna rely on that because over time, they will plug up.
Right.
But having those on there, going forward, Jim, you gotta make that happen.
And you've looked into putting drains on all of them?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, Dan and I have looked at it. So would you like to go after your meeting today and take a look at that with me and I'll show you what, what I have in mind?
If I don't have to fly to Casper?
Right, right.
You know, I don't know. But yeah, would I go at some point?
Sure.
Absolutely.
What, what size are those drains? Normal?
Half inch?
Yeah, I was saying.
Yeah, they're usually, they're typically half inch and they just PVC them together?
Uh, these are copper.
Okay.
They come right to it and I was thinking they might even be a little bigger.
You just told me you didn't have redundancy drains.
There, the drain is only on the interior of the unit itself, not on.
It's draining it away from the unit.
What's that?
This, this is draining it away from the unit.
Yeah.
Right.
The copper pipe is taking it from the unit down to the box.
No, the copper pipe takes it from the unit down to the drain.
Right.
When there was no, not enough airflow, then it wasn't allowing it to use that because it was pulling the air back through that pipe.
Man, I have a hard time seeing how that's.
Yeah.
I just don't follow that.
So.
I'd have to look at it.
So the, the copper pipe drains are already in place?
Yes, on the, on the main unit, yes.
So you just gotta connect the pan to?
I would like to connect the pan to that other drain line.
Yeah.
Which just involves putting a T in that line and?
Yep.
Can you trunk it to where you can tie them together or they gotta go individual to different stacks?
Put them right together.
Okay. Okay. I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna be having this conversation next year when the humidity's high and we gotta.
Exactly.
You know, there's just no sense in that, to me.
So yeah, if you have time, then we'll go take a look at that.
Yeah, it may not be today.
Understand.
But.
Totally understand.
And don't feel like I'm putting you off because I'm not.
Oh, no. Understand. Next one I have is, so our fire panel down here is, everything. We passed our inspection yesterday with, with the exception of, there's a board on, on the panel that charges the other battery, the backup battery, which that panel is no good. It has, and that's what I haven't asked off a little bit ago about who do I contact, is it still under warranty? I, I will get on that, on Rockhold Rapid Fire or Pipe Arctor. I didn't see anything for ATI in the book. So I'd like to know why it's, if it's under warranty, we need to get it fixed. If not, I mean, we still have to have it fixed.
When all this cordurover rental was done, do you have a list of the subs that were involved in HVAC?
Yes.
You have that list?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And like ATI is not listed as a sub on there. But Rapid Fire is, I don't know if Rapid Fire is another company with ATI. But I will find that out and I'll get on that. I have a guy over in the jail right now working on some locks. They're just on cycling.
I saw that, I mean, that was quick, quick this morning, Jim, that was, I looked at that and saw from Will and you were right back on it, so that was awesome.
I try to do that all the time.
No, I, I agree, but it just showed up and I was thinking, heck, what a good deal. I mean, you had, within fifteen minutes, had a guy headed over there.
Yep. So hopefully that's something we can take care of. They were just here, I'll have to go look, but they were here three or four months ago when we threw, poor Venus was, went through all those locks. So hopefully we don't have to call them back. But just so you know, that's what we're doing over there. We had some issues with the sprinkler system here. I got them all fixed up.
The ones we talked about?
Yep, yep. There was a solenoid that was intermittent working and somebody had messed with the seasonal adjustment on it. So I got that all done and you can see out here where somebody was, was prying on our box, so. I think I'm gonna have to put a different lock on it.
And get with Chris on what he's putting on stop signs?
Yeah. But.
Road signs, whatever they are.
And that reminds me, I have, I have road signs for him.
So you have.
Have you been taking the road signs, Jim?
I think it's a Washington and a High Tower sign.
Wow.
Somebody dropped it off.
So you basically had a zone valve problem?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Uh, the water feature has been a, an ongoing battle. I just talked to Todd Rowe this morning. He's waiting on a callback from his company that's doing the pump. So I hear about that a lot.
Is it always the same, same problem where it's not functioning?
Pretty much.
What's going on with it? I'm just curious, I'm not that we're gonna solve it here today, but what's going on with it?
It just stops working.
Pump failure?
Pump failure. And this isn't a pump, this pump has only been in there, I don't know what you're saying, I think it probably only worked a week, two weeks at most. So. But that's, that's an expense that he, Todd, takes care of, so.
I, I retired that power my brain when I shut off the irrigation district, so I need to get back to the problem solving solution portion.
Need to have the water truck let down, I need a collection of that thing, so. But I'll come to you guys before I.
The water truck?
The water truck that we got from, from Rachel. So when I get that pullback on, that I'll ask for your blessing.
Well, you got kinda lucky at Fair, you had a few showers roll through, so you probably didn't have to use it as much.
We, we still used it quite a bit, but it's been a good, a good truck after we put some repairs into it, but. Very helpful.
We might have to check with the emergency services and see.
Yes, I think that's why they got rid of it.
That's why they gave it to me. Yeah.
That's your problem, child, now.
The other one that I have on my list is John with, that in the, what, cabling in the library, he stopped it the other day just as a courtesy check to see when he can finish up. I didn't know if you guys have.
He's not done yet? Your guy from Army?
No. He is waiting on Jordan to finish up. So he can come back in and put all the, the wall plates on and make it look pretty. His, John's part's done, he's just gotta come back after Jordan has got it all set up and then he'll come back in and make it look pretty and whatnot. So he was just, I'll follow up on that.
Are those two not communicating or what?
They do not communicate. And I have not heard from Jordan whether he's done over there or not, so I, he'll be on at ten thirty.
Yeah.
So that was, that was my only question. So I just wanna, I guess I wanted to let you know that he did stop him.
You'll be back here at ten thirty?
Sure. Thank you. We need a translator.
Yeah. It looks like it.
I don't know if I can do that.
Never seen half the space. I talk to the people, so the engineers don't have to anyways.
Well, you're in that space between the rock and hard spot right now with that. Not under your own, but that's, that's where you're at.
Yeah.
We didn't put you there.
I'd like to get a cool plate. Get it off my plate.
Uh, yeah.
Um, that's really all I have for you. You all have anything for me?
You know, get ahold of me tomorrow or next day or something about, you know, popping them stairs down and going up and at it cause I'd be more than happy to go look.
Okay.
You know, and see.
You have to probably lay it out with the other, actually.
What's that?
You could probably lay it out up there.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, exactly. Exactly.
It's nice and loose and that's it?
Yeah. You know, you, you have these problems show up and if you address them and you address them right, then they don't show up again. And that's just what we need to be.
And I did, I'll fix it up, but I did check all the other sensors and all those other units up there, everything worked except that one.
For now.
So is there any correlation between the sensor not working and that one not getting the proper airflow? Cause all the rest of them, their flow was correct, right?
Yeah, well, we have, really haven't checked the rest of them. That's the one that works the most.
I wonder if you guys. I wonder if you could check, I mean, I don't know, you could probably check it for power consumption, but we probably don't have that much, you know, detail in the bills or something like that.
What zone is that? Because if you've got all those different units up there, you're gonna have one that feeds half of one floor, part of it on the floor.
Yeah, so that one does the hallway on the third floor.
Oh, okay, so it's the hottest part of the building?
Yeah.
So it's gonna run more?
Yeah, and there was only one return on it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I will.
I'll look at the one that shows up first.
So they'll come and inform me on another return? You said they've already cut the hole in the.
Yes. Yep, and you could tell the relief of that unit as soon as he made that hole.
That's true.
And then you could see that going right in that drain pipe inside the.
That's right. It's a big vacuum is all it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else for June?
Not till ten thirty.
I don't.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll see you at ten thirty.
Okay.
Do we just need to sign this authorization for grant funding?
Yeah.
From Community Development Authority for the Sixteenth Street project?
That just allows Candy to make the drawdown request for us. No, it's just like any other grant where you have to designate somebody to make the request.
Yes, okay.
Usually it comes with the grant package, but no one's a monster. That WCDAs.
How much?
One land.
What's our good change order for that?
It's a really.
That was partial original. Project. No, they had sponsored a grant for a million.
Okay, we'll move on to our statement of qualifications for the COVID stage two.
I think you have to wait until ten.
Public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing, but it's advertised to be opened at ten.
Okay.
Which, there's five that are up there behind you. I did contact each local contractor and made sure they were aware of the project, called a couple of them. I did not receive a local contractor. At, at least by local within Platte County, there are Wyoming companies in there which are supposed to be given a preference. So the goal is really just to ascertain who you want to interview. Statute requires you interview at least two. And so, and you don't even have to make your decision today, I think it's just informing the public who's issued statements.
Yeah.
But our tentative interview date was September sixteenth. And the idea was that on September second, you could make decisions as to who to interview.
Well, we're waiting until ten, I see we have two councilmen present, do you guys have anything for us this morning?
I can't tell you, he's no toy.
Got an update on Sixteenth Street for us?
Not today. Haven't heard anything yet. My phone hasn't blown up and I haven't gotten emails on it, so.
We had, we did have one opposition to a street lamp being put on the corner.
Yeah.
Open sixteen. And your water tower project's on schedule?
As far as we know.
When is that scheduled to be in operation?
October fifteenth, correct, Kelly?
Yes.
There is a, an individual that was proposing putting the, uh, Blackmore sign.
You have to pay us the University of Wyoming for that?
Then it was blessed by the university.
Oh, it was?
Yes, however, I adamantly opposed paying it because the funds were already expended and we already, I do not wanna add any more money to the project that.
Kelly, I, I think that's a great decision.
In the amount of thirty-eight thousand.
We need to get some.
We told the individual, if he wants to come up with thirty-eight thousand, we'll put it on.
If he wanted to be a sponsor for the community and raise that fund and.
You know, it might show up on the water tower in John Deere green, it's just.
You plan on climbing? You got your gear to climb with?
You know, I've seen some pretty creative people.
Yes, indeed.
I was really hoping they'd put Willie's face and then Willieville.
Okay, we're trying to attract businesses.
Oh, oh, and you know.
Is camera on or?
I might, I might donate to that cause.
You're safe where you're sitting.
Am I?
Well, as far as I know. Thirty-eight grand to put that steamboat cowboy logo.
Because if we would've done it originally, I think the price was around eight to ten. But because it got delayed and whatever else went into the whole thing, to go back up and redo it at that level, we cost a thirty-eight grand and any cost associated with that, and no offense to U-Dub graduates, but we're Wheatland, I understand we're proponents of U-Dub and obviously. However.
Right.
There's no need to expand town funds. Just put that on there, in my opinion.
It's not specifically Wheatland.
Well, it, it's specifically Wyoming, however, again, I don't think it's a necessary item that we put on there and expand civilian funds on that our constituents were already throwing a fuss about the bulldog, never mind adding that to it. So I was trying to find a better utilization for the funds.
Yes.
And I think you and I have had some talks, Ian, about.
I think there was just, wasn't there an article in Cowboy State Daily somewhere else about paying at something on the water tower and they didn't fund it, but it's privately being funded.
In Cheyenne?
Cheyenne.
And that's exactly what it proposed here was if that person was so adamant about wanting that, as a leader in our community, by all means.
Right, check.
Contact the other U-Dub graduates and see if they wanna partake and have that up there. And I'd be a huge proponent of that. I'd go up there for the actual painting and signing.
Well, the other one, isn't it like vinyl?
On the side of the water tank?
Yeah, well, the, the bulldog.
Yeah, well, the, the bulldog tank, isn't that like a vinyl attached? It's not like a coat of paint, right? It's either here or there.
Yeah, and this is how it's gonna weather the storm, especially if you put it on the west side of that water tank.
Yeah, it has to be one tough, one tough cowboy.
You see where I'm going with that?
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that'd be even a wise choice, in my opinion.
Well, and if it was in vinyl, two years down the road, you got flapping stuff coming, yeah, whatever.
Oh, that west wind coming across this west side of the water tank.
Be like the concrete like it's during the winter time.
Yeah.
What's the capacity of that tank?
Yeah, and the other one, the other one was, uh.
I'll have to look, I honestly, on top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah, it's five hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Getting, getting rid of the fireworks.
Oh, yes, we had a gentleman who wanted to come in. Retired law enforcement moved to Wyoming, Wheatland specifically, to enjoy his retirement. Also has PTSD. And wants to stop the amount of fireworks that we shoot off because it aggravates his condition, which my response to that was. I'm a retired military member with PTSD. Although I do not like the fireworks. My dog and I comfort each other.
That's exactly, yeah.
And that's why he's there and that's why I'm on meds and I knew what I'd got when I moved back to Wyoming to Wheatland. So do your research better. And I'm sorry, but it's, you know how I have no real tact in things? I tell people the truth and. He did not show up till the last council meeting like he was supposed to. There's people complaining about things around the town and I asked him to please apply for the municipal judge position, the police officer, county sheriff's office. I'm like, please come help us stabilize the community.
I think that actually has a lot more tact than you give credit to yourself. It's the only real thing that it gives them a little bit of control over the situation, so they shouldn't take care about much about it. By all means.
And that's why I always advertise and invite them to, if they want, in a couple of years, they're gonna have my seat in the council. If they want to be in the sheriff's office or the P D or municipal judge. By the way, we are hiring a municipal judge. Ian, I think it'd be a great job for you.
I'm slithering down.
It's nine hundred dollars a month, part-time, I think you'd be a key player in that.
Oh, with your blatter.
Can the, can the judge be sued?
They wanted me to do it, but I cannot be an employee of the community, other than town and town council, so they did not allow me to play that game.
Oh, bother.
I may have had some humor in that position, but.
Yeah.
I may even recall too, that was allowed in the state statute, which thankfully it's not.
I have, it's tough filling positions, you guys know that, we know that, you know, it's.
How's your planner going?
The people did pretty.
We've got officially two applications?
Yeah.
We have.
Oh, we have to discuss that tonight. We interviewed three, however, like I was talking a minute ago.
Now, are you guys going with a full-time planner or is it gonna be?
Well, that's why the workshop is this evening. Let me just fly over when I keep cranking my neck around to look at you thieves.
There you go, yeah.
There, now I have the breath.
That's right.
No, it's part of our workshop tonight to discuss how we're gonna work that position and the job description. Because after interviewing several people. We came to the conclusion that the cost benefit for that position with the qualifications required would not match. Especially in a multifaceted position because we don't have room for a full-time planner. And same thing in the full-time building inspector, we. So we're looking at some other alternatives that we're gonna discuss this evening at the workshop to try and resolve those. I'm not trying to speak out of turn, but I'm just kinda.
I, I, people tell me all the time, and I think I appreciate when they say I don't want your job. And that's.
Well, and that's what we signed up to do and like I said, told people when I ran for this position. Coerced.
Yeah.
That. My decision is to do what's best for the community and town as a whole. Regardless of my feelings or anything, it's me what's best for everybody involved. Occasionally I pack mints in my pocket to keep my mouth shut and.
And a coffee can.
Real good coffee. That's why I was kinda concerned and if I'm speaking out of turn, let me know with your contract for the HVAC in the root. If that was a contract laden item. Wouldn't that fall back on the contract or not fulfilling?
Probably.
And that's, again, I'm not trying to get you Wheaties.
Probably is, yeah.
I miss going back to my previous life.
Yeah.
And that's where the inspection of all of them. If I'm out of turn, tell me, but I took on looking at as a whole is that if that was part of the project, they were guaranteed to perform. And the task in there, then they should be obligated to come back and resolve that, in my opinion.
Well, that's hence part of my visit to go up there and lay eyes on it. So, uh, cause I would be unable to have an intelligent conversation with an HVAC guy on something I haven't looked at.
Correct.
You know, and so I got no problem doing that. And the HVAC contractor could have done everything required by the design, it could go back to the design.
Yeah. But the manufacturer of the equipment that was installed was not meeting that intent. Because it was not designed to have the two intakes.
Yeah.
These, these new systems, whether they're heating or cooling. If they have any kind of a. Value or i- if they have anything that has a restriction on the return side that doesn't allow that amount. They'll shut down.
Right.
I mean, they'll, they'll just flat shut down.
Yes.
And he will do the same thing. It's like, wait a minute, we don't have enough air coming through here. Shut them down. And the other thing that they would have to take into consideration that hasn't been talked about yet with that many units in these floors is balance. Because that air has to be balanced. How many cubic feet do you need for this floor versus its heat, cool requirements? You know, at this level, you're gonna need more heat and less A C.
Right.
On the third floor, flip it. Because of windows, I mean, that's another big thing that has to be looked at when those systems are designed. It's a square footage of windows. And what side of the building are the windows on? I mean, it gets pretty deep.
Oh, what kind of windows do you have in the E ratings?
Well, yeah, the whole thing, yeah, I mean, it, it gets to be a deal, you know?
With your deal, trust me.
To involve balance in the system because the last thing you wanna do is walk into the courtroom up there. And it's, say, seventy-two degrees. And then you go in Mona's office and you go, it's like seventy-eight degrees in here and you're right across the hall. It's like, why didn't this balance out?
And you come down here and destroy a meeting?
But you know, I'm talking about balance per floor in as much as the whole system because that's how they would do it.
There's, there's a lot that goes into those systems. The only thing I know about HVAC is if somebody tries to give you R twenty-two, you should probably take it and sell it on eBay. It's the only thing I know. That's H, I think they're going for six grand a pound. So it's like, you know.
That's Willie's life right there.
Should we weigh them first to see who to interview?
Why do I weigh?
Yeah.
Any of them ticking?
They're all addressed to Malcolm, so that's a fair question.
Any stains, wires, misspellings, white powder? Just give me your warrants, I can get out the door, Bernie.
You get your anthrax shot.
Which time? How is a military guinea pig, are you kidding?
I don't have a knife in these pants. We, I'm just preparing to open, it's not ten o'clock yet, I won't open them.
You know, when you open them, if you could just tell me who they're from.
Well, it's ten o'clock.
Feel whole here?
See what? A rancher was out a knife?
I feel naked. Don't have a knife. Also, I shouldn't be trusted with a knife. Christmas and August, boys.
And we're all still here. Okay, it's officially ten o'clock, you can look at them.
Okay. First one opened up was. Hydrotech. Incorporated. Yeah, these are all good tickets. Malcolm?
There should be five in each.
You need two?
Yes, please. One clean copy, one for us. And this is statements of qualification for phase two of the courthouse. Which were. We put a request for qualifications. May thirteenth. This is for the exterior preservation.
How much information do you know for your? Just who, who submitted?
Hydrotech Incorporated.
Okay, my mom?
Yeah.
Second is from Grow House Construction Incorporated.
These are guys that started. Yes, Grouse House was.
Okay.
How long were they there before they were not?
Not very long.
Very long, is what I thought.
The third is from Sampson Construction and B V H Architecture. I guess Grow House is also part of the G S G. Sampson also has a U S B.
Hey, this is the first thing that our picture's on.
That's right, they know their crowds. The fourth is Van Ewing Construction Incorporated. Van Ewing. I've got more space up here than you do down there, Malcolm, so I can hold them if you like.
You're good.
And the final. S O Q is submitted by Grim Ditch Design and Construction Consulting Incorporated. I'm seeing that right. And they also provided a U S B.
So just for matter of record. It looks like all. Except for Grim Ditch and. Hydrotech are Wyoming-based companies.
Wish I had, Malcolm.
So. Grim Ditch and Hydrotech are not Wyoming-based companies, so you can still select them for interview, of course, but. When you grade in those interviews, you have to give a preference to the Wyoming-based companies. And so there will be a grading rubric when it comes time.
I'm just looking, uh, Grim Ditch and Hydrotech, right?
Right. Grim Ditch is a Colorado-based company, Hydrotech's Utah.
That's correct, okay. Sampson and Grow House, uh, Wyoming?
Yeah, Sampson would be Casper, Grow House is Laramie.
I didn't realize you were that close.
And Ewing is Gillette. Yeah, Van Ewing shows office in Gillette and Sheridan. Okay, so we have till the second of September to review these and come back with who we want to interview?
Yeah.
What does that put us on our schedule for, is that fit with what we were talking about for?
Yeah, so on the screen, we scheduled interviews tentatively for September sixteenth.
Okay.
And then. Contingent award October seventh. Hopefully have executed contract twenty-first. And then that allows them planning, um, preparation in the, in the winter and then beginning work in the spring.
And they were all made aware of that in those R F Qs? Okay.
And I published it. In the Record Times, I published it in Casper Star. Just to try to get a larger base, but. And then, of course, on the website.
Do you remember how many we had for the first phase originally?
I actually, when you say that, I was trying to get logged into the Doc Box so I can look.
Seems like we didn't have this one.
I think we had three.
Four.
Wait, uh, cause the architectures also interviewed. Deservedly.
Yeah, well, yeah, it was a little different process. You interviewed architectural firms.
Yeah.
Designed the project and then issued that out for.
That's right.
Yeah, so your statements were of qualification for architects.
Yes.
It was a little different.
Well, yeah, it would be because at that point you weren't talking about structural changes so much as you were talking about others. This is a little different. This is a lot different.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a lot better.
Yeah.
And so you'll notice in the R F. Request for qualifications, R F Q, there's no. Request for pricing, you know, we put in the R F Q, here's the budget, here's the scope. Really, the purpose of this. This path with the design build is there's more emphasis on relationship with the contractor. Than anything, and so you'll establish that relationship and then really they'll go to work in designing the scope. Okay, for your budget, we can accomplish this. And then as they go, it's supposed to be a little bit more fluid.
It puts a little bit more on the contractor, but I think that.
Way more.
It seemed like they can handle it. Previous experiences, say they. Previous experiences say they are probably better than architectures or archit... techs.
I've had way more trouble with architects over the years than I have the actual contractors. Well, you can do that. No, you can't do that. Well, I showed it on the piece of paper where you can. Uh, that doesn't work.
So after, so for the courthouse, after you did, um, your design work, you only had two contractors that, um, returned, um, bids?
Okay. That's what I was saying.
Now it's Grow House and Sampson.
Yes. Um, for the courthouse, it was Sletton.
Oh, that's Sletton.
That's right.
Sampson was the four-hundred.
Yeah.
Or I mean, Grow House was the four-hundred.
Yeah.
And Sampson. You guys carry around brooms in your trucks, cleaning up messes? No, I know, cleaning up other people's messes. Big brooms in your truck. We come around and clean up other people's messes.
So really, the purpose between now and, um, and I'll get a printed copy of the RFQ for everybody. Between now and September second is review. Go up the RFQ, make sure they included everything or statutory that were required, which is, um, A through I. And then determine which... The only requirement, you interview at least two. You could interview all of them if you wanted to. That's up to you.
They've worked all over the country.
Who?
All of them.
Oh, yeah.
We've seen, there's actually some pretty cool projects in there.
Chairman, you do have Tricia on that as well.
Have her homework cut out for us, leaving all these.
Yep.
Do we have PCV online? Tricia?
He just the chamber.
She does the chamber, okay.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Sorry.
Morning, do you have an update for us this morning?
Sorry, I'm late. Our board meeting went quite long this morning, so lots to talk about.
Good.
Have any updates for us this morning?
Um, no, actually, not today. Just continuing the course. Um, Oktoberfest is September twenty-fifth, um, downtown. Uh, Jen Stone is taking that this year because I have a WEDA conference to go to, and we hadn't done it in the past, but we're gonna pick it back up. Just this year came to us a little bit late. But, um, the chamber are gonna pick it back up in total next year. So that's from five to seven, the chambers portion. And then Brian from Brooklyn's Tavern is doing a whole nother thing from seven to ten. So the chamber part is from five to seven. Um, so this is the normal stuff, you know, you can buy your beer signs and have free brats. And then at seven o'clock, Brian's bringing in a band or some, uh, I think the, um, Southern Fried is the band that he's bringing in at seven, so... And, uh, obviously they'll have vendors down there, uh, the businesses downtown, and then I'll be gone at the WEDA conference, uh, and I think that's it. That's all I wanna report on.
Still moving forward.
Um, Willie Colby from, uh, Rocky Mountain Generator Supply, he's are gonna be our new Glendoe representative. Oh, wait, there is another thing I want to do, God, I apologize. And then, um, 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 oh, Tiffany Lang has joined our board as well, so we're super excited to have, you know, uh, some active voices and some, uh, I don't wanna say invigorated personalities to join our board. It's gonna be fun.
I don't know if those are good adjectives.
What, I'm sorry, Ian, I didn't hear you.
I'm not sure those are good adjectives.
Um, I don't know. I don't know what else you say, strong voices?
There you go. They're probably accurate, yeah.
Ian, I am the first one to say you are always the smartest one in the room, and so if you wanna lend me any vocabulary help, I certainly would take it.
I feel like, oh, I appreciate that, Tricia. I don't think it's true.
I do. I do. I see them a lot of rooms, you know, so, um, I, you know, my favorite thing to call you is a brainiac, and I geek out on that, and I love it, so keep...
I got called a poo-poo planner the other day. I'll take it.
Well, we certainly appreciate, you know that. I don't have to reiterate what I think of you. I appreciate you.
Sounds like you have a lot going on.
Uh, it's never...
As always. So. Good to be busy.
Our board meeting's at seven, then I have you guys, then I have, and again, I apologize for being late, um, then I have Lodging Tax Board. We do have a, um, meeting this evening at the Glendoe Town Hall. It's with Senator Varrasso's Economic Development Person and, uh, Governor Gordon's Economic Development Person, um, which, um, they, it's a meet and greet. It's to say hello. Each of the, uh, towns has a chance to speak and tell them what they think their economic development, um, what they would like to see economic development-wise on a state and a, and a national level. So that'll be exciting. We're looking forward to seeing what, what each town brings. And that's up...
Sounds good, thanks.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, that's at four in Glendoe. If you wanna come. It's not gonna be, uh, each town has about five minutes to speak. Strictly about, uh, what, what, uh, their needs are economically, and that's it. Now, no discussions on things.
And that's like, check water, Gurnsey, and everybody.
Yep, yep, I've invited the mayors, I've invited, and I was asked to do an invite by Gabrielle Murphy, um, which is Senator Varrasso's, to actually invite. Um, so I, we collaborated on who to invite, and so that was, we sent that out to each town. So the mayor and the clerk, so that they're aware. And, um, economic development for each of those, so like, you know, Philip Bellis, since he's CHED, and then, um, Dan Sisson and CA Frederick out of Gurnsey for economic development. Of course, our economic development, Rick Brockman will be in attendance. And, uh, so basically just, you know, economic development.
Well, thanks, Tricia. Thank you.
You bet, guys. Keep doing what you're doing.
Have a good day.
You as well.
You as well.
Were we waiting on Jordan? Is that who we're waiting on?
Yeah.
And Peggy, right?
Let her know it's ahead.
Turns out opening packages doesn't take us half an hour. No, no, no. I, I understand. I would've planned for probably forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Boy messed up. I know it doesn't surprise anybody here, but...
Haven't you seen your kids open packages this morning?
Mitch, you know, maybe I should've brought them in here today. It had to be crap. Nobody even known what came in what package.
Well, opening packages is a short side of this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got hours here reading to do.
There's no pictures.
I meant to do fifteen minutes here and then thirty minutes here, so...
Thank you for putting the key there the other day.
You're welcome. Jimmy helped. But, yeah, it worked out, okay? Perfect.
Thank you.
Anytime. I'm listening here to do whatever you have.
Hey, thanks for... Good morning. Morning.
Thanks for your help with YouTube.
You're welcome.
I think it's worked really well.
Good. Happy to hear that.
Really good. Thank you very much.
Yep. No problem. We had anybody on Zoom speak yet?
Just like...
Just did?
One minute ago.
Fair enough.
Was that good or bad?
I'm just curious about the audio for that.
Oh, oh, because it's competing, sending it in two different directions?
Yeah, it creates a loop, so we had to try to cut that loop out.
There's a lot more that goes into this stuff than people let on.
Mm-hmm.
At Jupiter, we didn't do anything. It was Jordan. I, I logged on, so...
You helped me test it.
Very good. Thank you. I've had a lot of really positive feedback from people being able to see it afterwards. It was good, so...
Yeah, that part definitely is super nice.
Yep.
Soon as Jim gets back, we'll get started. Jordan?
Okay.
Waiting on the library stuff or waiting on a library board member? But I've got general updates on her too.
Okay.
You still have a library board member online, right?
Yeah.
We'll start with your general updates, Jordan.
Sounds good. Um, everything's been going pretty well, I think. Um, I, uh, the level of tickets has been about a normal, steady trickle in here and there. Uh, just, and most are working on the library project, um, but, uh,
So have you changed your ticket system updated?
I did cha- I actually, I did change the ticket system from the old one to a new one. Um, and, well, since that invitation came out, that's when that happened, that we talked about last time.
And that seems to be working better than the old system.
Yeah, I'd see, uh, to be honest, yeah, I think that one seems to be a little bit more reliable in terms of, um, me getting the notifications and, um, whatnot. I'd had some issues with the other one where their tickets would end up in there, but they wouldn't end up in the front end of IC. So the user would get an email saying the ticket was created, and then maybe the next day, sometimes they would pop in and all of a sudden, or I did have to call support with them a few times. I haven't had any issues like that with this new one. It's part of the reason I wanted to, uh, excuse me, make the transition. So it's been, been really good so far. Um, and it, uh, also is nice because there's some other features with it that if, should we decide to use or if should we need, the fact that I can assign devices to users, because it's also part of the system I use for the remote management and monitoring. It gives some extra capabilities that the other one didn't. Other than that, I think there's three, four tickets open. One of them, we're just kinda waiting currently on seeing if a possible fix has fixed it, um, because the issue kinda came and went. So it's sounding like it may have, so it'll be closed super soon. I think I just got one as I walked in, so maybe there's five, but, um, uh, and then the other ones are, um, either related to the library stuff or, um, super new, just normal little issues, so... I think everything's been going pretty well.
One of those tickets did. When you're around, everything works fine.
Kinda, yeah, yeah. I do have one of those.
They just go haywire.
Yeah, luckily that one's not for you guys currently, but I do have one of those tickets. Um, so...
Look for noise your car makes when you take it to the mechanic, and then it doesn't make it when you get there.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. That's about every other ticket. Um, for the library stuff, we're really close to being done. All the, just, all the public computers have been moved over to the new public network. Um, the public Wi-Fi is active, which that's a big part of, we'll talk about, but figured to give you guys a quick, bring you up to speed. Um, all the admin computers have been moved over to the new admin network, so they're fully here now. Um, have not moved them over for active directory, user authentication yet. That's the next step. Um, and then we did get four computers to replace their older ones, so that'll be, that'll be the last piece. Really close to being able to shut down the old network completely. Everything seems to be, in terms of network-wise, functioning super well as expected, so... Should see a nice speed increase on the admin network, um, over what they had before, um, and obviously it's more management and monitoring stuff now too. So the other thing is the Wi-Fi, Julie and I have talked about it quite a bit. Um, I think it needs password for security purposes, just so that it's not completely open, that it actually has some encryption. Um, because when you don't put a password on a Wi-Fi network, everything is just completely open. Um, even having a simple password, which right now, when I set it up, I just set it to their main phone number, provides at least a small layer of security for both the county and the users using it. But Julie's requested that I don't put a password on it for the ease of use for the public. And I'm, we're kinda at a point where she's adamant about her side, I'm adamant about my side, so we kinda need a tiebreaker.
Yeah.
Basically.
Right.
So there's two different networks. There's the admin network and the public.
Yep, there's an admin network, and then there's a public network.
And a public network isn't tied to anything.
Well, it runs through the same infrastructure.
So there's only so much capacity on the wire?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's part of it. Yeah, so there's, there's a long list of reasons why to have a password. I mean, the most, some of the most, the most important one, obviously, is security, at least a little bit of encryption. Otherwise, that traffic's just completely out there. Um, in that scenario, somebody can really easily spoof, you know, an access point and have clients connecting to that instead. One of the other big things is, you know, people, well, anymore technology, cell phones, most cell phones are set to connect to open networks automatically. So as people just drive by or walk by, they're gonna be connecting and disconnecting, you know, people that don't intend to use, you know, the Wi-Fi. Then that's gonna put an extra, uh, you know, strain on there. If it had a password, then those people wouldn't be connecting. Um, I mean, I would imagine in a month period, you probably have five hundred easily connections and disconnections of people that just didn't intend to use it, because it does reach further now than it did before, because we did deploy, um, access points throughout the building, so, um, you know, it's, it's reaches a lot further, and I think before, you mentioned that some people across the street could see it already. So it's definitely, you got a wider reach now. Um, but a password prevents that, um, provides at least a little bit of encryption. Not great, obviously, because the password's gonna be out there for, would be out there for literally everybody, um, but it'd be, be well-known, but at least the traffic going through it would be, would be encrypted rather than just completely open, um, to the world. The, um, other thing we talked about is how, uh, different other libraries, you know, do it and whatnot. Um, everybody does things a little bit different here and there. Um, U-Dub, they don't have a password, but they do require you to log in with your phone number or Facebook. Um, but they also recommend that you watch what you do. You don't, you know, do any banking apps. If you do, they say you should use a VPN tunnel so that you can, you know, encrypt and protect your traffic. Um, the, um, uh, I believe Julie found a lot of the other ones don't require a password. Um, my argument to that is just because somebody does something one way doesn't mean it's the way we should do it also. Um, I know Wyoming's kind of been a few years behind the rest of the country when it comes to adopting, you know, technology things. Um, and in my research, I found a few... Um, and in my research, I found a few other states that. Um, the states themselves actually recommend and require their libraries to secure their networks. It's not. Mandatory in some, um, some of them it is. So it's kind of more of a, I guess, what you guys are comfortable with, what direction if, um. You know, if you don't want a password, I sure can set it that way. I think, being that my recommendation is it has a password, I'd like to have a waiver of liability in place should something happen. Um, is my recommendation would be to secure it if we decide to not secure it.
Here's my question. When did we say hit the go button on do this? And you started working with this guy? Okay, in the last budget year, when we finally decided, okay, we're going to get the guy, Laramie, you're going to work with him, you liaised on all that. When was that? March? February?
Yeah, Jeb was here after January.
Yeah, and we were talking about doing this for a certain amount of money in last year's budget, and we knew what this was going to be. And so here's what gets me. We hit the go button back then, we had to line the guy up, yada, 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 go through all that, and you, you get turned into a liaison between these two. From construction, from the wiring, from the tear out, from the trim out, to all of that kind of stuff. And so. We're talking about passwords and, and that kind of thing today. Why wasn't that talked about then? Knowing that it was coming, how hard would it have been to just say, we got to finalize the whole thing?
I do feel like we talked about it being password free three years ago, when we very first, I guess we'd have to go back and look, but I do feel like. I would have said for sure, I feel like we sat in that old, in the public health and said, like, a library's a library. Like, it's different than anybody else. We need open access.
And that was.
I do feel like it was discussed.
I've got, I mean, I remember talking about you saying that they can get on the whatever, you know, that you guys don't censor or restrict their access to places. I'm, I'm good about talking about the password on the merits of Tupac County and the, and the downfall. Of not having it or having it or whatever else, you know what I mean? But, uh, what's the? What's your mission statement as a library?
That's our mission statement.
Provide information.
You know, I mean, as a library, I would like anybody, like, if, my best case scenario that I can describe is. A family of six is on the interstate in the middle of winter in a blizzard and the road gets shut down. So it's well known that you go to the library if you need wifi. So now they're pulling in with their children to probably the back of our library, front of our library. How are they going to know now that there's password? I, I think it's, I think, I also found out earlier today that we might lose Libby over this. Which, do you guys know what Libby is?
Explain that, please.
So Libby is our online ebooks, and we have a contract with them that's open access. So if you're also traveling, you're a tourist and you're traveling across the United States and you're downloading your audiobooks. And you need to download a new one, then theoretically, you should be able to go to the library and download that good book. With a password in the middle of the night, that's not necessarily gonna fly.
Is the library providing emergency services?
No.
So explain your, your, your side of this.
My side is.
Explain his, and you, you've done a pretty good job, but I just want to have you have a chance to completely explain what your position is.
And Peggy probably could do it, but I'm really bad at explaining things because I fight for the public and. But I just want anybody who needs internet at any time, I mean, any airport, any. Hospital, like, they provide it, but a library should absolutely be the place where you can go and you have access to all the information. We do not censor, we don't filter. We provide internet to the bottoms percent of the population. We provide internet to the top. It's, we're there for information. We're there so you can get information twenty-four seven, seven days a week. So I don't know, Peggy got better way of?
Oh, I think that's true. The spirit of public libraries, and everybody knows that, is you can walk in to any library, anywhere. And have access to all the information that you need. That's, that's the whole spirit of the library. And, and. I don't think you should have to go up and ask for a password. That's like knocking on the door and saying, can I have a key to the bathroom? You know, like, you should be able to come in and have all that access at your fingertips.
I agree.
You can go anywhere. You can go to the hospital and log in on a guest wifi, you know, not have to log in, you know, automatically connect you to. A guest wifi. You can go all over the place. Uh, we're not there to. Discourage the public. We're there to serve the public.
I agree.
In every way, shape and form.
So what are, what are you guys' operating hours at the library? When are the doors?
Um, ten to eight, Monday through Thursday, ten to five Fridays, and ten to two on Saturdays.
Do you guys let people in before and after business hours?
Oh, yeah. But most of our wifi we're talking about is used outside.
I'm, I'm totally besides that. So do you guys, how, how does that work? Is the library locked?
Yes.
Okay.
But we have meetings and stuff.
Why do you guys lock the library?
During closed hours?
Yes.
Am I not understanding that question?
Well, it's, it's just a, you lock the doors after you leave and unlock it when you come?
Oh, when someone's not, yes. Okay, I'm, I'm like, wait, just leave it open at night? No.
Yes, that's, so that's where I come at it, at, is, it's like locking your doors when you leave the library, right? So I, there, there is a point where you guys are providing books and access to shelter if you want to go that route. You know, you could, you, I could make the argument, if somebody is stranded on the interstate and you want to be in the business of providing a public service to them, that. You know, the same argument is that you would leave the library open. I don't think that's a, a real great idea. But I look at the wifi the same way. Everywhere we go nowadays, if you log in, if you go to a hotel room and that comes as part of the service. You have to log in with a password. I think that's really common.
I was at Bishan Airport Friday and I did not have to have a password.
And that's what I said when I, where I'm going with this, is I would like to discuss the merits Tupac County and. You know, whatever else. And so we have interests and we have things that we would like to protect, but I do think that. That it does affect more than maybe we give it credit, and to me, it's very similar to locking the door when we leave at night. We don't want people in the library messing up with stuff. To be honest with you, I know about this much about IT, but I do think that. There's, that's an access point where people can get in and do stuff or affect the operation of the county. And so I'm, I'm in favor of putting a password on it because that's standard practice everywhere, and we also lock the doors when we go home at night. But I'm, I'm open, but that's where I am right now. I don't see a difference in those two things.
To your analogy, and I'd like to, it's not that we're just trying to stop anybody from accessing it. It's like locking the doors at night, beginning, literally. Letting everybody literally have the key or putting a sign on the door that says the key's under the map.
Everybody has the key already, if they have visited the library before.
If they've visited or, I mean, it can be put on the door, it can be published, you know, in the newspaper. I mean, it could. It's not that we don't want people to be on it, it's that, for one, we want, it's not, and it's not just about. You know, the, the county, but it's also the end user protecting their data to an extent also.
That's, that's, there's, there's big risks to open networks. I mean, there's very big risks to open networks.
Can we just have a segregated network where one's public and one's private?
We do, we do, but that's.
And that was my question when I asked about the admin network and the open network.
Yeah, there, there is too, but it, when you, when you utilize the same infrastructure, because you can't. You know, in a, in a business situation like this, you can't run two completely physical, separate wifi networks. They just sit and they fight with each other. So, you know, we just installed six wireless access points throughout the library. That all runs through the same infrastructure. It comes, you know, back here. It's no different than how we set up, you know, the wifi here at the courthouse. And when you're on the same infrastructure, you know, it, it's not, it's not bulletproof just because it's segregated. It's, in the, in theory, it is all the same thing. It's just a virtual segregation.
Um, we have another library board member online and she wants to chime in here. Morning, Lisa.
All righty, great. That, um, it has, um. Sorry, I forgot to unmute. I, I just wanted to, uh, tip in real quick, because people keep talking about standard practice. It is not standard practices in libraries anywhere to have a password on, on the public system and, and. That includes Wyoming, it includes national. I don't, I don't know if you saw the big packet that we sent you. We, we did do research to look out and see how do, how do other libraries navigate this. So it's not, it's not as though we want to do something different, uh, from, from everybody else. What we want to do is we want to be a library, which provides access to the internet without a password. Now, why that's important, uh, you're, because you're talking about the, the benefits and the services, uh, to the people of Platte County. Uh, the reason that's important is because people can use the library even if they're not there during the day when the doors are not locked, right? So, so we're not just locking the doors on the, on the building, we're kind of locking the doors on the internet. There are people that park out in the parking lot at night to use the internet because maybe they can't afford the internet at home. Or maybe they don't have a good internet at home because, uh, because, um, you know, the, you know, in, internet infrastructure in areas like Wyoming can be quite difficult. Um, and I mean, I'll use an, an extreme example, uh, you know, during, during COVID. Uh, people were able to come to the library and use the library and sit outside and use the library system, even if they didn't have a password, even if they couldn't go get a password. Um, and I, I mean, I, I understand the issues of security and I, I, I checked around with some people that I know that do IT. Granted, it's not in Wyoming, um, but, but they seem to think that some of the security issues are odd, and I'm talking about not just. Um, you know, security in libraries, but security in, in businesses that do need to have a public and a private network. Now, there, there, there could be some, um, some structural issues that are preventing that. But the idea that having an easily guessed password is going to somehow provide security against bad actors. More than it's going to just prevent some people in the county from using the internet. Uh, that, that seems to me a little bit spurious. If someone really wants to get into the county system, uh, you know. For whatever reason, um, I, I think that having an easily. Obtain, it's not going to stop bad actors. All it's going to do is it's going to stop people that really need internet and can't afford internet on their own. So that's kind of, it's, it's, again, I just want to reiterate that this is not standard practice. It is not standard practice for, for libraries to have a password on their public network.
Thank, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
The, so. So I. I think there's a lot of ways around this password issue and the, here's how I see this thing going in the future. So if we have. We are Platte County, we don't have, maybe, do we have a fiber line over there or whatever? Whatever we have, we have some capacity. So say in the event that we have a lot of traffic that's disrupting whatever, this is an example, but. We can't afford to go put a better backbone in there or whatever if it starts slowing down our system. Um, and I want to get to more than just this, but. So if we do go without a password and how would you guys, and it starts affecting the network, how would you guys feel about metering everybody to a. You know, regulating the speed to everybody, because that's what it'll.
It already is.
It already is, so.
Each, each individual client can only grab ten meg down and three meg up, but if there's a hundred people on it, that's a.
And so they might go down to what, what would be like two G speed.
Yeah.
Which was, I mean.
Which is unusable for, for, for this, for the internet that comes through nowadays. Everybody has so many pictures and such large, uh, websites. That's unusable. And so we have, this is not a problem we're going to discuss and make it go away by discussing it. This is an actual problem. The, the other example I'd like you to use is that I don't think that we are giving enough credit to the creativity of people that are. Bad actors. You know, to your point, Lisa, you're right. It is a pretty simple thing, but without a password, it, I think of it like this. Uh, would you be comfortable if you went to the library and were starting, you know, you went to, there's some expectation of privacy when you go check out a book and you go read in a corner or whatever? Or you don't, you don't like somebody looking over your shoulder when you're on the website? You guys don't do that, do you?
Yes, honestly, we do, because we switch, we have had some bad actors in the past, so.
So you guys are doing that, so.
I mean, we're not behind, but we can see what you're doing.
But that is a very, very.
Which is probably why they're doing it in the parking lot.
Right, so my point is, is that, one of Jordan's concerns is that. One of the techniques that people use to collect data on you or me or whoever else is using a network is they. They have something that looks at all the traffic that goes between this point and this point. And so they gather, they scrape up everything that goes between here and here. The problem becomes when they. As you said, don't go onto their banking website because they collect all the data that goes between you and the bank, which is. Your, this is everything, right? It already does that with Facebook, but it's basically like somebody watching over your shoulder when you're on. The computer, when you're reading a book, when you're doing whatever, they're seeing everything you do, and that is to some extent. Passwords does a little bit, but I am a big fan of.
But what's the difference between the password being on the door and on the marquee sign?
That's, so that's, it makes it where they have to make a decision to go get it, and so not everybody going up and down the street is able to grab on to it.
Well, it will be on the marquee sign.
That's fine. And so if you put a password on the door, what is the difference? And somebody who comes up to the door and needs to use wifi, they look, and if they can read, and they understand what they're reading. It says wifi network is this and password is this.
We will have to do better lighting.
How, how does that disenfranchise the people who are coming there to use it after hours?
I just think middle of the night's a little bit different, which is probably most of our usage. How does that not, how does that not negate the password?
Because when you actually put a password, there's encryption on the traffic.
There's encryption, yes.
It would be the difference of you writing down your password and handing it around to everybody else in this room.
Uh-huh.
Versus putting it on the locked box, like, say, say you're trying to hand it to Steve, you know, you need to give him a password. If you just write it down on a piece of paper and hand it to every single one of us in this room, we all know your password. But by putting a password on it, it actually encrypts the traffic itself. So you're essentially putting that traffic in a locked box and handing it to Steve. Nobody else sees it.
It confuses, it, when you, when you put a password on there, if I, if I understand it correctly. It scrambles up the numbers in some form or fashion, so it doesn't come over when they scrape the data, it doesn't look like Jim, comma, enter. Would you please look at the jail for this, whatever? It looks like a bunch of numbers and whatever else that you have to have an encryption code to actually get into it. So there's a value in the password in doing that because it scrambles up the data in between you and the active access point. Is that correct?
So basically, there's, there's a lot more to it, but yeah, in a way, basically, it's the difference from just being able to read something to it being unreadable. Which obviously some of the traffic itself that people are sending is going to be encrypted also.
Yes.
But those packets, you know, those letters that you're sending back and forth to these websites essentially. Without the password, you can just open those and, and read the data that's in them. If they're encrypted, those letters are relatively meaningless. Obviously, if we're the true bad actor, we're not going to stop them, but.
But like at a hospital, every hospital I've ever been to has a guest wifi, every airport.
That you have to sign into.
And, and there's nothing more, more sensitive than your health data, so. I don't understand how they can have open guest wifi and they still protect all their patient. Data, and we, you know what, I, I have a hard, that's my issue.
Yeah.
You know, if there's a bad actor out there that wants to pull some stuff, it doesn't matter to me. I'm trying to wrap my brain around this, but. It doesn't matter if they have a password or they don't, you know, they're in the door.
The thing is, without a password, a twelve year old can easily do this.
Some of these twelve year olds are pretty damn smart anymore.
With a password, I mean, okay, so we'll say without a password, you know, a five year old can do it. Not saying they actually can. With a password, maybe it's going to take a twenty-five year old. This, it's not, it, it's more about the, the protecting of the data itself, because it is so easy anymore. I mean, there's little hardware devices that you can buy that just literally scan the entire open airwaves. And they can just log those packets, you can plug it into a computer, use a cheap, free piece of software and gather all sorts of information.
Which is why we have RFID wallets and stuff like that now, right?
Right, blocking, you know, yes. The, I think the, the argument about the hospital portion of things is. They're, they're, they're not giving you access to your health information, they're giving you access to the internet. They're, they're, they're not giving you access to your health information, they're giving you access to the internet. What you do with it, it's kinda like, you know, how UW says, you know, with the, with their open, with their open wifi, don't use any, for anything, you know, serious.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it sounds like there's less concern about security for the county's network. It's a segregated guest network. Sounds like the concern is that the users could be exposed to some risk. So my question is, if it's not password protected, and the idea is that you have a password, so you're making it an effort to gain access. If it is an open network and you have a, I mean, every hotel I've been in where it's open, it pops up with the screen.
Captive portal.
That nobody ever reads, but it's basically join the internet at your own risk partner cuz there's a lot of stuff that could go wrong. Is, sounds to me like if it's open, there just needs to be a disclaimer when they join that.
Which, it's called a captive portal, the thing that I've tried to explain to Julie with that is, that's gonna cause a whole nother level of, of problems, I think. That's even worse than a password, personally. Captive portals, in my opinion, are not one hundred percent reliable. I mean, yeah, you gotta type a password in, but depending on your device, it may not realize there's a captive portal. And then you just don't have, you're connected to wifi, but you just don't have internet.
Yeah.
No, it's, in, in terms of usability, I think a password has less impact to the end user than a captive portal does. I'm not against a captive portal either, we've talked about it.
Um, I think.
Honestly, we probably should have both, but.
Well, I, I think what we're coming down to is that I don't know enough about IT networks and stuff like that. I, I'm not sure if, uh, but I, I do know enough to know that if it is the hospital or if it is whatever, they're certainly not doing zero security. And so there's probably something else in there, and so there's pros and cons to everything that you do when you make a portal and make an access point or whatever else. Our specific ones are, we are sensitive to the amount of traffic that goes on the, on the network because it slows down everything here. The other side of it is, is that there is a security risk and I know that those other places are mitigating that security somehow. I don't know enough about IT to know how they're doing it or what the pros and cons are, but I know that they are because that is a liability that's very easy to take care of and everybody is doing it.
Yeah, in the packet we sent you, I mean, everybody is saying they have a public and private network, basically.
I don't even know if I can understand the differences between a public and private network, you know what I mean?
To me, it's always.
But I do know it's possible, yeah.
Yes, but I don't, uh, see, that's where, where I go, I'm a little bit hesitant, right? Because I don't know enough about those systems to say, you know, if I think it's, or what we think is a public open network, that's probably not what it is. And I don't know if I know enough to tell you the difference, right? And so I don't, that's why I'm saying, let's talk about it for the merits of Platte County. I know our risks and our capabilities and I assume that everybody else is doing some sort of security or risk mitigation. I would like to see some, some, something to mitigate our risk on the open network. But, and I think there's a lot of ways to do that to keep it open to the public and very accessible to the public. But we also maintain some protection, you see what I mean? I just want a little bit, and then this, the password is the absolute bare minimum to, to get into the.
I mean, how.
Lisa has another comment, real quick, Lisa.
Yeah, sorry, I, I'm confused by a comment that Jason made where he said that. Uh, a, a password, even if everyone has it, provides some encryption protection. And that is contrary to what I do know about networks. And I, I did text a couple of my friends while I was sitting here and I did get a response from one and, and if people have the password, then the, there is no encryption protection. So a password, if everyone has the password and it's on the door, then that provides no extra encryption protection than not having a password. Now, that is my understanding and if, if you could clarify that, maybe I could ask better questions because that's, again, contrary to everything that I know about. Uh, encryption protections on a network.
Before we get into that, let me go back to, my concerns are this, and, and this might answer the whole thing.
Can, can I just have my, I, I would like to ask, I would like to have that, that question answered because he's talking about, he knows something about a network, but what he's saying about the network doesn't sound right to me, so I'd like to have that clarified.
Okay, after, after I, I ask this question, I promise we'll get back to that. So what, what level of risk protection are you guys comfortable with? Because I would like, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight for something.
I'm a library, so I want everybody to have all the access all the time.
Okay. Okay, and the, the board is the same way?
Yes. Lisa?
I wa- I want people to have access to the library, although I am, I am sympathetic to also saying that I also don't want people to come into the library and get access to, uh, the county files. I don't think a password will give that protection, not, not my understanding of.
Okay, okay, sorry, go back, you can go back to answering Lisa's question, I'm sorry about that.
The password, the password's not necessarily for the protection against county's files. That's the, the whole public versus private, which I think I've said three times so far, whenever I've been asked, we, we do have. There is a public and there is a private network, none of that is ever perfect. I'm, I'm not sure who is answering the questions that you're asking in term, but in terms of a technology standpoint, it is accurate. Yes, somebody knows that password, we're not trying to protect it from everybody, we're trying to protect it from at least a little bit. Yes, putting that password out there makes things, you know, very easy for everybody, but it still does encrypt the traffic. For, it's just not out on the airwaves, it's like, you can look at it this way, i- if, you know, you get on a two-way radio that you buy at Walmart, anybody can listen to you. Where putting a password on it is like buying a commercial radio that it just sounds like eh 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 when you're talking. You don't want all, you don't want all your information just being broadcast out there. With, with that password, it puts that little bit of scrambling on there, yeah, it's out there. It's going to, but it is going to scramble it, it's wifi, the nature of wifi is it can always be decrypted by somebody, that's gonna happen. The newer security protocols out there, they, even if you do have the password, the way they work makes the, having the password kind of a moot point. They rotate keys, they have communication that's directly from the client, uh, you know, like your cell phone to, you know, the access points. Like WPA three has rotation protective management frames, there's, I mean, we could, we could discuss that part of it all day. I'm, well, like I said, I'm not sure who's answering the questions, but for, for them to make it sound like knowing the password means that it does absolutely nothing would not be factually correct. Knowing the password still does something. It still provides at least a, a minimum level of protection that you're not on a two-way radio or a megaphone just out yelling your bank information out on the street.
So what would it take to get it?
I guess I.
And I, so if we were to look at doing the captive portal portion of things, um, we'd have to find one that integrates properly with wifi. There would be some sort of cost, I did do a little bit of research on that and it's anywhere from like twenty to five hundred dollars a month. For these kind, for a service that would, it would be able to integrate with the access points that we use, um, and.
So what's the log-on procedure of that, I mean, how encumbering is that?
Well, there's, there's a couple of different options. If we went the route like UW uses, you have to give up your Facebook account or your phone number.
Actually, UW, just to interject, I talked to UW yesterday and they actually do have a full open.
Okay, either way, let's go on.
I was on the website and that's just what I was gonna call it.
Well, that's what we called them and they said.
So let's go on about the.
So you also have the other option like Malcolm said, where you go on, it provides, you know, basically the terms and conditions of use and you have to accept. Um, the reason that I say that for one, they're unreliable, you know, devices, they, they do work, but it is gonna cause problems for people, just the same as a password, I guess. To be honest, Julie and I's conversation, you know, her, one of our concerns was people that can't read. Well, they can't legally accept the terms and conditions, they can't do, you know, and, you know, if people have issues and the other, another topic was deaf people. We can't explain how to do it to them, you know, they, to me, they're both basically the same thing. It's just two different ways to skin a cat and a password is a much more reliable way.
So, so let me have one more thing and then we can do whatever, but I would like to see some security on this. It doesn't, I'm not getting much movement from the board as far as you guys seem pretty set in what you would like. And so I'm good by that, but I'm more likely if we have problems with this in the future, to kinda go, this did not work and, and do our own thing with less input, but that's my, my opinion, that's, that's my, that's my opinion, that's where I will be after this. If, if you guys can't, I need some budge room, right?
Try it?
Try it with a password.
Try it without a password for six months and see what happens.
So you've, you've been doing it for how long without?
We've been doing it for twenty years without a password.
So could you try it for six months with to see what that would look like?
The problem is, is that where are we at on Guernsey, Glendale, Chagua, but we have a couple of problems.
Let's, let's stay with this one for a minute.
Because I, we can't password protect farmers without password protecting networks.
But we're not managing their networks, like so Guernsey we will, and Guernsey was the same plan because they would be tight packed.
And Chagua now too cuz they got the better internet.
We didn't budget for that because we were under the impression they would have.
And then also our policies are gonna have to be changed.
That's, uh, you're not hearing what I'm saying.
Okay.
You're, um, what I'm saying is that I, I don't care, but if we have issues coming up in the future, I'm less likely to, I'm, I'm less likely to budge in the future because.
Right, right, yes, absolutely, I think if we try it for six months and we have problems, let's reconvene, but let's give it a shot, it's worked for twenty years.
At that point, I'm gonna be less interested in what the, being convinced or persuaded about security issues. But to me, that's a very big issue, right? And I would like some risk mitigation on our networks. And I understand that this is, we have tied, consensually tied ourselves together, but that is an issue to me, so.
Lisa.
I mean, I'm kinda sharing your issue with security, uh, because again, I, I think it's important to protect the, the networks that might be connected to this public network. A password is not gonna give that security and, and again, I mean, the person I, I asked about this is, um, and she works for Sun Microsystems and, you know, she's been, well, it's not Sun anymore, but anyway. Um, uh, you know, it basically once someone has a password, there's no security. That, that not having a password does, having a password and not having a password, once you get into the network, whether or not there has been a password, provides no extra layer of security. So, so for some reason, Jason is stuck on needing a password to get into the system as though it's going to provide any layer of security other than a password which the name is on the door, which the password is on the door of the library. That's not going to provide security, so I think we need to try to find another way to allay concerns about security being tied into the other network other than having a, a publicly accessible password. Cuz a publicly accessible password doesn't help the library do what it wants to do and it doesn't help protect the county's, uh, network systems from, from bad actors. So I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda, I, I'm just, I, I mean, maybe if Jason could provide a simple, clear access.
Are you talking about Jordan?
I'm sorry, Jordan, I am, I'm.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I'm doing network, I'm doing conversations back and forth on this and so I'm getting stuff mixed in, mixed up. If Jordan could, uh, could, could provide sort of a simple access, let's say I have a password, I'm sitting outside the library. I have the password to the network and I log into it with that password. Once I have logged into it with that password, is there any security in that system that having a pa-? I mean, what advantage has the password given us in terms of security? Again, my understanding, and I might be asking the questions wrong, my understanding is that once I'm in the network, there's no additional security from having had a password, all of the encryption from the password is sort of negated by having the password, that's what a password does. So that's, that's my question.
It's not what a password does, but I'm not sure.
So, so Jordan, I have a question that kinda follows this. If Peggy sent that information to me and it's password protected, it's encrypted. If Jeb has the password, can he tell what she's sending to me?
Technically, no, because there's client isolation on the network also, there's, the devices don't talk to each other.
And that doesn't have anything to do with the password?
It doesn't, but if there was no encryption at all, that traffic would be open to the world and it could be scanned and seen. It's the, my analogy of passing a password.
But with the password, it, it is open to everybody that has the password.
Yes, but still isolated amongst themselves, it's, it's. I'm trying to think of the best analogy to describe it because I, I'm not sure that everybody's understanding what the password does. It's not about the access to the network, it's about what it does to the traffic.
It's, it, to me, it's, it's, it doesn't come down to that at all. When, I've already established, I don't know anything about encryption, but what I'm hearing, this is my, this is what I'm trying to get across to you guys. I'm hearing a group of four people that are just, or whatever it is, are just, the only thing that I'm hearing is no security, no risk protection, no matter what. And we've already established a password is the absolute bare minimum, and so we're arguing about how effective a password is, but the only thing we're asking for is the absolute minimum. And so, no, it's not gonna do very well, you know what I mean? So we're saying no to a password and the reason we're saying no to the password is because it, it's not very good. But we can't, we can't, you guys aren't giving us anything else, and so that's what we're stuck on and no, passwords are not very good, but they are the bare minimum. And so the argument that the passwords aren't very good is, it doesn't fall with me because you guys are saying no to everything.
I'm not, I, okay, so maybe what my confusion is, is how does everyone else do this?
I don't care how everybody else does it, this is, this is a, to me, this is our issue.
So I, and honestly, the loss of Libby concerns me a lot, um, and I do think that will happen. That, I mean, we're probably fifty percent of our patrons currently are using Libby. Um, so I just think that you're, we're going away from the concept of a library, a library's here.
I'm, I'm good, I'm good with whatever you guys would like to do, but I'm, I'm personally, I'm going to be less, if, if things are not going how, or if, if it, if something does happen. We're talking about the future, nobody knows what's happening in the future, but if something happens and we have issues, we're gonna, I'm gonna promote staying in-house to fix them at whatever cost that there would be to fix it.
How does a password cheat fixing?
I don't know.
Okay, that's where I guess where I'm confused.
So, so, Jordan, is there other forms of security besides a password that we can look into?
In terms of like security encryption on the wifi itself, no. No, that is the function, the pa- the function of a password on wifi is for the encryption.
The, the point I'm trying to, we cannot get around some encumbrance on people who use the network.
Yeah, but captive portal is gonna add that.
That's what risk mitigation looks like, you are sorting out everybody except for the people with the express purpose of accessing that network. That's the only thing we're doing, is if you have to decide to use the network, that's all we're asking, yes, and that's what a password does. And so, or, or whatever encryption, risk mitigation, whatever it is, password, that's just work. But the only thing we're doing is we're asking you, if you wanna be on the network, you have to decide to be on the network, you know what I mean?
Yes, so like this, can I, so the Spanish speaking guy comes in and he needs, he's like the point of the copier, you know, print. We're like, see? And then, so they get out their phone, we'll say internet, and then he goes to his settings and picks us, there's your, what's the difference between that? And a password, that's where I guess I'm.
Jordan's, and so, I don't know, but the point is, is it, everything nowadays looks to get on to something of the mobile network, right? And so people driving down the street, they will connect to it, if they stop at a stop sign, they'll connect to it, they'll grab onto it. And so that changes from like the thirty or forty people that decide to be on the network and you're increasing that to five hundred people that drive by their phones or tablets or whatever, connect to it. That's, that's the decision, that's the, if you want to use a network, we'd like you to decide to use a network, that's the. That's the only thing I'm saying. Would a captive portal prohibit that?
No, it'll still connect. It's just then going to generate the traffic to pull up the, to wanna pull up the captive portal. Most phones, phones at least, will detect, automatically detect a captive portal. And generally, after you connect, as soon as you open the web browser, its purpose is to redirect you. Like, I know Android, when you originally connect, a lot of times, it will just immediately open the browser. So then you're gonna have people driving by when they connect, potentially, you know, browser just immediately popping up and wanting them to accept the terms in the captive portal, which then is gonna limit their network traffic to literally nothing until they're either not connected anymore or out of, or, or accept those terms.
So, so can we do, can we do this? Can we try it for however long? What I'd do is put a cap on the bandwidth that the public, public network uses, like a global cap, to where it doesn't slow us down. And so, and then see how that works for you guys, is that? And then you probably should have a liability waiver in there if you don't, if you want to. We'll go ahead and waive that liability if the library board would like to do that. And then we can try it out. How does that sound?
Yeah, I'm, I've never been this, so that I won't, no, obviously.
No, no, I don't expect you to.
You know, whatever, whatever decision is made.
Here's what it comes down to. We're getting technical, professional advice from our contractor that says this is what we should do to preserve our network and, and our infrastructure. We are saying, we know better than you, we are not going to do this. That's the decision we're making today, guys. So I don't, I don't know who.
I don't think I know better, I'm just fighting for the public.
No, I, but it doesn't matter who you're fighting for, that's the decision we're making. Our IT contractor, who's our professional, we've chosen to manage our IT network, is saying, please do this. And we're saying, no. And so that's what we're doing today. And I'm fine with that, if you guys are fine with that. And we'll see what goes on from there and try and protect the upside and downside from that. But to him, he's given us good advice and we're saying, we're, we're not gonna take it. That's what we're doing, okay?
That's what we're seeing.
So I guess get us a waiver of liability and? We'll try it without password. I would, I would like a global bandwidth cap on it.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna have, with the potential for that many people, the cap's gonna have to be pretty low.
Yeah, I'm fine.
We have a timeline for Gernsy, we just called.
For Gernsy?
Yeah.
Well, we need to finish you guys before we can do Gernsy. So, and with changing this stuff, obviously, it's gonna take me a minute to get all this stuff sorted out so we can continue to move forward. But, uh, after, they, are they wanting the Wi-Fi, which part of it? Are they wanting, I guess, because it depends?
Access, what's it called, Max? Uh, Malcolm, the U drive, what's it called? We don't have access to, U drive?
Oh, O drive?
O drive. We don't know, we don't have access to it.
No. I mean, they're probably, they're probably still a few weeks out on that because it's gonna basically, it's a mini version of doing you guys again. So, I'm still probably a few weeks out on Gernsy portion because I need to, we need to finish you guys and we've got computers to put in and then the network needs to be engineered, or to go over there, install the first bit of equipment, finish the configuration. So we're still, to act, for them to access the O drive, that's honestly, that's the very last part of the order of operations.
So when will our library be done?
With, with any luck, as long as we don't end up with any more delays, I'm hoping the end of the week or very beginning of next week.
So what do you have left to do, Jordan, so that Jim's contractor can finish what he has to do?
I, to be honest, he, at this point, he may probably come, come back, which is very soon.
Because he, he was here wanting to know if he could come finish.
Yeah, there is the, by the card catalog computer, he didn't terminate those also. So if he could, that would be great, since he was gonna test them and provide us a sheet.
So Jim, we can come back.
Okay, I will come this afternoon. And by the card catalog. Could, could you write him a note so you can just forward it or show it to him?
Yeah, I can, I can send you an email if you want, Jim.
Okay, agreed. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, because there's, there's very little that's still connected. If he wanted to plan to actually, you know, come back at the end of next week, I don't see any reason why we couldn't, we couldn't be ready to.
In order to finish this, somebody has to do something, you know, or to talk about it.
And we would really like it finished.
Yeah.
I've been doing a lot.
It's been, what, three years we've been trying to get finished? I'm tired of talking about it.
Jordan would like it finished also, I would imagine.
We would all like it finished, yes.
But there's been a lot of time, even though I haven't necessarily been at the library for every single minute of it, there's been a lot of time that's been spent in the last two months.
I completely trust you and I don't even need an explanation.
We don't want it to seem like, we're not moving forward, because we very much are.
So is there anything else we need to discuss? You know what you're gonna do?
Yeah, I know what I need to do.
Jim's gonna go deal with this guy.
Letter, whatever.
Yeah.
Something in there.
Yeah, it is, so it can take me just a couple of minutes to type it up, because it's super short.
Sweet, I'll get it, John, I'm gonna get that end of it wrapped up.
Okay. Thanks, thanks Julie, thanks Peggy, thanks Lisa.
Thank you, guys, see ya.
See ya, thank you.
I'll go for a run.
We're just a little bit behind now, so we'll move on to Lucinda and Jill. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for hanging out.
Um, should, should we wait for Jeb or no?
Yeah, he should be just a minute, so.
Doug, you're early.
Better than late.
Not according to the agenda. We are behind.
So he's late according to the agenda.
You just had better timing.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I really don't have anything to hand you today, but I'm just giving you some reports that came out this week. Uh, and just want you to be aware of it. Um, on August 15th, the US Treasury Department released Notice 202542, a major piece of guidance that will reshape the future of wind and solar tax credits. This notice fulfills the mandates from Executive Order 14315, and we shared that in an earlier commissioner's meeting, about the one big beautiful bill act and delivers on the Trump administration's commitment to end corporate welfare for unreliable energy sources. The guidance confirms the 5% safe harbor is gone for large-scale wind and solar facilities. Um, effective September 2nd this year, developers of wind and solar projects can no longer qualify for Sections 45Y and 48E tax credits simply by spending 5% of the total project costs. Instead, they must satisfy the physical work test showing that real onsite or contracted construction work of a significant nature has begun before July 5th of 2026. And that construction, and that the construction continues without interruption. For over a decade, green developers and tax equity financiers have gamed the system, looking, blocking in credits with minimal upfront investment, then delaying the projects for years. That game is over. And I'm gonna tell you what, this is what Chris Wright, the Secretary of Energy, said. Intermittent power sources are a parasite on the grid. And by, I have talked to many people that work at our own power plant here and I would love to have them come and talk to you guys about how that is true. Um, wind and solar have first priority on the grid. So whenever they wanna jump on the grid, our guys have to power down. And that hurts our reliable energy, our power plant that is super clean. It's like, I've had it described as a very expensive air freshening device or, not air freshening, but air clarifying device. Um, one more thing here. And then Treasury's Notice 202542 is a welcome course correction. American energy should be built on reliability and value, not on subsidies and virtue signaling. The result should be better economics for affordable and reliable electronic generation powered by natural gas, coal, and nuclear. Um, just one other thing that Secretary Wright told reporters that he supported the move to end these incentives, saying the industry has grown enough to be able to compete without the government financial support. I think it's, quote, "I think it's the right time to sunset them in an early energy-producing energy." The government provides subsidies and incentives for whatever we do, but they've been around for 33 years. And I think you've seen a mature industry develop. So like with any energy source, it's got to achieve maturity, maturity and compete in the marketplace. And that's all we ask, an even playing field, right? So I think, I think they're on to something. And just a quick note about, um, what Ian said earlier today, I thought was very interesting discussion about the passwords and encryption. I learned, what, Ian, you have asked me, oh, why do we come to these meetings?
No.
We, we come to learn stuff and I, I learned something today.
You're not learning anything from me, I can tell you that much.
No, but the question about encryption, what Jordan was talking about to me.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, I didn't realize that, that that's, that's the job of a, of a password. It makes it unreadable, basically. So it's, it, it's a good thing, I think it's a good thing.
It is.
So that's where I would weigh in on it, just to protect everybody. Anyway, uh, but what you did say was, we need to do something to mitigate our risks. Um, and you said the power, the password was the bare minimum.
Yeah.
And, and this kind of relates to the regulations that you asked us, Jill and I, to take a look at and can we fix it, because they are technology outdated. They need revising, so that's what we're doing to mitigate the risks. And just a reminder, tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, I think it's here, a workshop on those. And I'm looking forward to that.
We're pretty aware of it.
Uh, but, um, and if, if it, if they, I would ask you to think about this, not make a decision today, but because we are an agricultural community, right? Because of that. And land is vital to our livelihoods. Prime farmland is extremely vital, okay? Um, recent proposals for large industrial solar, wind, and BASS raise substantial risks to safety, public safety, emergency response. And here's a biggie, water resources. And I'll come back to that in a second. Soil productivity, rural roads, property rights for everybody. Not just for the people who have the turbines on their land, but for everybody in this county. And long-term land stewardship, that's important. Let me just talk a bit about water. When I went to the, um, open house in Chugwater, I think it was June 18th, I'm not sure, I asked the engineers who were in charge of the solar panels, I said, well, I'm assuming you have some kind of a catch underneath where you're gonna put those panels in case of hail, very likely in our county. That's the hail belt of southeastern Wyoming. Uh, and I've learned more about how they, uh, what happens when that water and rain and hail come after. That's gonna reach down into the groundwater, eventually to the aquifers. Do we have anything in place yet to test the water now to get a baseline so that we can protect the county and the aquifers? I think we have to think about that. And I guess I would propose to do these regulations right. Consider this, you have the power to do this, just think about it. I'm not asking you to do it today. A temporary moratorium, say six to 12 months, to get it right. No permitting until we get the regs right. We don't have any BASS right, we don't have any regulations for BASS whatsoever. And I guess, I guess that's where I'm coming from on this. Um, a lot of our codes were adopted, and you know this too, before the rise of large-scale solar panel, uh, facilities and the high-capacity BASS that do not address safety, decommissioning, and farmland protection requirements. And you'll, I guess, I hope that we get to say that we, one of the big things we worked on were setbacks. Decommissioning is a biggie and financial assurance. What has happened with these wind companies around the country is they create subsidies.
Subsidiaries, subsidiaries?
Subsidiaries, subsidies. Thank you, Ian. Starts the same.
Both of which are true.
Subsidiaries. And what happens is, if we don't hold the parent company, the subsidiaries, the owners that operate, all of them, what happens is we will end up with stranded assets in Platte County. Approximately $600,000 to remove at least one turbine, concrete, everything. I mean, I, we heard, even at the town hall last night, we heard some fellows say it takes a lot just to get the crane there. It's gonna disassemble this, millions of dollars.
Probably.
Anyway, okay, um, if I am looking for, all I'm gonna say is I'm looking forward to the workshop. But I want you to just consider taking time and doing it right and not feel rushed. You have the power, you have the authority to do that. That's all, that's all I got, thanks. Unless you have any questions?
I, I just wanted to follow up and say, um, we appreciate Malcolm stepping in and making an appointment for us. We did have a wonderful town hall last night with Chuck Gray and he let us know some information on the wind turbines, the solar and BASS. And he is on the slipboard, so he tends to have a lot of information on that. And he also understands that, I believe you guys have chatted with him, which is fabulous. Um, one thing that, just a little caveat, and I didn't bring the paperwork on it, but in Scottsbluff, Nebraska, three years ago, there was a massive storm that hit a solar, a solar field and as soon as it did, it destroyed the solar field and then that company immediately filed bankruptcy. So three years later, those are still just destroyed, laying all around and nothing has happened because everybody's gone. And this is a thing that we want to protect Platte County from. So, anyway, and I don't know if Roy was there also, did Roy have a, a comment on that? Otherwise, I'm, I'm done and thank you for scheduling that.
Chuck, Chuck is very, Chuck's very educated on, on this topic. And if, if there's any information that y'all need, uh, he's a common sense guy. He's not an engineer, but... He's not an engineer, but he, he is a businessman. And I think he should, he sought out, if you haven't already, to, for advice.
What's the role of the Secretary of State in doing these projects?
Business.
Business?
LLCs, businesses.
Okay, so he's just on the?
And he's on the, the.
SLIP board.
SLIP board, yes.
State land.
And he was, he was the one that has been in opposition of many of the projects that are going on, one of, one of five.
That's what I was wondering, what his, what foot he had in the game? I was unsure.
Just a quick note. I think, I think part of it is there are sections that were on the original letter that were sent to, well, if you look at the map, I don't know if you've seen the map. Steve, you've seen it.
Yeah.
The one that we notated, all the yellows. Several of those sections are state lands. So he, he has some skin in the game to watch out. I mean, SLIP watches out for state land that way. So there's no federal land involved.
I don't know whether there's any proposed turbines on state land at all. I think it's all private land.
There's, there's potentially some state land as well.
But yeah, there's limited, there's, I went and looked, and there's 120 acres of federal land from Slater to the Laramie County line, from I-25 to the Goshen County line. There's four 40s. And they're up closer to this end of federal land, real land.
No federal, no federal, no federal lands for us or, or working with the state land or?
There's, if you take out that one large chunk of state land that borders the interstate there, this, this side of Chugwater, there's probably about 3,000 acres of state land in that same area. And the total area is about 84,000 acres, what, what I looked at. Now, I know your project's not anywhere near that big. So, yeah, there's limited state public ground in, in that whole area down there.
Question, if I could. It's my understanding that Goshen County is not going to proceed with, that, that Nextera is not going to proceed with the construction of the windmills and energy in, in Goshen County. So how does this affect the project? Is it going to be as efficient? How many less windmills are we going to see? How much more area? Or are we going to put the same amount of windmills in?
So I think the misconception that is out there is it's our project. We, we have.
Next, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I said that. I'm sorry.
It's, it's a, an agreement between Nextera and the private landowners in that area.
Yes, but, but sir.
We, we don't have anything to do with the project. We didn't contract with Nextera.
No, I'm not, I'm not, please don't take the wrong.
And we've seen those comments before, that it's the county commissioner's project. We don't have anything to do with it.
I'm sorry if you came across that way, but.
Our land use plan regulates them. And we have those in place currently.
Yes.
So they do have to come through us for a permit.
So my question is, is, you know, and they're permitting if you, if.
It's, it's not going to affect how we permit it that Goshen County doesn't partake in.
Yeah.
But I was just, maybe that's a question we can ask.
That's up to Nextera, really.
Is, is the efficiency going to be as high as, as that?
And that's not part of our regulations. Efficiency isn't part of our regulations.
It's something that we should know, though.
Subsidies aren't part of our regulations. Never have, we've never offered subsidies in Platte County. We probably don't have.
Information that, that I think should be out there.
That's, you know, if, if they would like to provide that. I mean, to be honest with you, that's outside our level. You know, if you want to put in a fish tank and grow carp in your front room, I'm not going to tell you which food to use. It's the same, I don't care. You know, that's your business and, you know, where our nexus of, of what we need to know doesn't go as far as near, you know, everybody thinks. You know, it's right, the, this is our password to get into the game. And if you know the password, you can use the internet, you know? But I, I don't care if you lose money, you're game money. To be honest with you, if there's 3,000 yards of concrete in somebody's place, that's their problem, you know? I, I'm not going to be the one with the pickaxe out there getting it done. And I'm not going to be the one collecting the check from them doing it either. Nobody else in the county is, you know?
A lot of this stuff is basically an agreement between the wind company and the landowner, and that's where it starts. I mean, that's the baseline of, of, you know, the landowner's rights to do that with these. Our job has been given a whole lot more importance than it really is. You know, as far as you guys need to do this, you guys need to do that. Well, there's some of the things that, you know, we can look at. And we look at a lot of stuff, trust me. I mean, we look at a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
But one of the things that gets me is, you know, years ago in the legislature, Mr. Gray either was a proponent or didn't fight the tax subsidies for these companies at a two- or three-year rate when they came into the state.
Was that?
Which, why the change? What's happening now?
2019.
The, the original legislation for the tax breaks that they get to come to the state was 2010, I believe.
Maybe, yeah.
But, yeah, the state of Wyoming gives them the subsidy to come to the state.
There's something I'd like you guys to think about. I've been thinking about this a lot. You know the saying is always true, is that power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. You familiar with that? You know where that comes from? It comes from if you have absolute power over someone, you can make decisions for their livelihood or whatever else. It means that you can't make everybody happy. And so you're going to choose somebody to make happy. And so you favor that person and to help with everything else. That's where that corrupts absolutely. It means that you cannot solve everyone's problems. And so if you have the power to solve every problem, then you're obligated to solve every problem. But that never happens because you choose one over the other. And so we are not in a position to even have very much power, so we can't choose which side to favor. And, and let's be honest, there's two sides here. There's this side and this side. So if we choose one over the other, that means that, I mean, by definition, we are corrupt because we're favoring one person's interests over another at the detriment to another, right? But that, but that's where that, that's where that saying comes from.
I'm, I'm fairly new to this, to this topic on this level, okay? I understand that it takes a lot of, of attention every week, every other week.
Every day.
It's, pardon me?
Every day.
Okay. You guys get calluses on your ears from phone calls?
We do.
But, but on the, it, it is important. But you can only do so much. And, and I personally, like most others, want to see you do what you can and be informed.
So we, we've all been doing a lot of research into rules and regs and looking what other places have done. I spent all day yesterday afternoon looking at regs from all over the country. One of the things that I discovered was here recently in, in a place in northern Michigan, small community that had, they wanted to preserve their agricultural way of life. Things were changing. It was about a 6,000 population community, similar to Platte County. They didn't, they didn't want to see these changes, so the government instituted all these regulations that made, made it impossible to, for these other people to do what they're wanting to do.
And they were community, they were members of the community.
And they were members of the community. And they went along with it for a while until they said, we can't take this anymore. It's cutting into our business, our right to use our property. So they filed a lawsuit. The result of that lawsuit is the judge said, you're refusing those people the right to use their property how they want to use it. You're going to have to change your regulations so that they can do that. But not only that, you're going to have to come up with 49 and a half million to pay them back for the loss of revenue that they lost because of your regulations. So now that community's looking at selling two very nice parks with lakefront property on Lake Michigan and Historic Lighthouse to try to raise 49 and a half million to pay these people back. So we have to look at it that way also. We can't be too, I, I think I talked to Lucinda one time. I said, we can change our regulations, but they have to be within reason.
And the, the point is the calluses on our ears, I mean, very good point. What's, what I think the danger is, is getting outside of our box, right? And that's what Steve's talking about, is we start asking for risk once we get outside of our box, right? The Fourth Amendment to the Constitution says there shall be no illegal search and seizures, right? And so that's a regulatory seizure via land use. That's a real thing. But in any case, we, we don't, I don't have, I'm open to everything. But this, I'm, I'm only taking in and taking into consideration things that we can control that are inside of our box. And so if the federal government is doing this and this, it's good to know that, but that doesn't affect us at all. That's, that's something that affects those guys and the federal government and all this other stuff. So with all the input, we're sorting it. It's the only thing we can do. Sorting it, does this affect us? Does this not affect us? Okay, this does. You know, and we're compiling all this information and trying to get better about knowing how to react to a project that is new to us, right? But we're sorting off a lot of information that we can't do anything about. And so that's how I'm dealing with it, at least. And so we're still listening, I'm still listening to all the input. And everything that you guys tell us is new. This is useful, this is not useful. This is something we can do something about. This is something that I have to put over in this other box. But we, we can't, the risk to us becomes we cannot grow that influence past where we're inviting so much risk, right? So the big thing about power lines when they're coming through is this, you're going to take on industrial liability on an agricultural landscape, right? If you hit a power pole with your tractor, you might be out millions of dollars an hour, right? That's real. And so if we start asking to take on that risk, then we are liable for the $49 million over five years in lost revenue. With this project, probably more than that. With, with the use of these guys' land, probably more than that. The size and scope of the county is far, far, far less than the size and scope of private business in Platte County. And so if we start degrading their ability to perform their, their business, to, to use their property and to, to work their business like they would like, then we're inviting liability. That's a real big risk. That's my point of view in a nutshell.
So there'll be a time to discuss these rules and regs changes tomorrow night at the open house or the workshop?
I still have a couple of comments.
I just had one question for you. At your, at our last meeting, you brought a request in that we, the people, I want to know, who, all of us have had questions. Who is we, the people?
The population, the cities, the citizens of Platte County.
And these people are calling, who's she speaking for? She's not speaking for us. So is there a certain group that you're speaking for?
Yes, there is. I am what's, I have a lot of people that come and talk to me. I also wear the hat of being a committee person in the state, or excuse me, in the county. So I, it is my job to listen to people.
You represent the, the Republicans in the 1-1 precinct?
No, I represent the people in our precinct. It's not Republican or Democrat or independent.
Aren't you a Republican committee member?
Pardon me?
Aren't you a Republican committee member?
Absolutely.
So you represent the Republicans in?
No, I represent all the people in the committee, just like you guys represent everybody in the county. The thing that I, I understand.
So with that, with that in mind, with that in mind, you represent all the people in the county. You guys have a very important decision coming up here, what, Monday? To, in regard to the.
Absolutely.
So do you represent all the people in the county? Have you reached out to the person in the county that overwhelmingly was supported by all the people in the county for that position? To see if they would be interested in throwing their name in the hat?
Have I reached out? Well, it's, it's the group that works on that part. That's the special elections.
Have you looked at the results from the election in '24, the primary results?
Well, that's a funny comment. Yes, I have, Steve.
To see who, who the people overwhelmingly supported in that from Platte County? Who is it?
Yes, absolutely.
Who was it?
In our county, it was Eric.
Yeah, and so is that, is have, has your group reached out to him to, to see if he'd be interested in stepping up and, and putting his name in the hat for that position?
I do not have an answer for you on that one.
I didn't think you would.
The group has not met, Steve, so don't go and get snarky on me.
I'm not getting snarky.
We have not met, and Monday night is our meeting that we are going to discuss this.
And what's your point, Steve?
You, you come in here and tell us you represent the people.
We do.
Yet the people have voted.
The people have voted.
Did, did Eric win?
He, he was overwhelmingly in favor in Platte County.
Did Eric win?
No, he didn't.
Okay. Now, question for.
I'm not understanding where direction that you're taking this conversation.
Yeah, he's trying to disflair. I want to go back to the one thing that, that you guys are missing here. Title 18 tells you guys that you do have a bias in this game. You need to protect the people's health and their properties in this county. So when Ian goes up there, please let me talk. So when Ian goes up there and says, I don't care, I don't care, he absolutely should care. And I know you care, and I know he cares, but sometimes you say you don't. And I believe that your job is to protect the population. And now the other thing that, please let me finish. Now, the other thing that is very important is we have to do no harm to the neighboring counties or the neighboring properties. That's like if somebody come in and put a nuclear SMR on your property and had stored nuclear facility, nuclear stuff there, the neighboring communities or the neighboring people have a right to speak up on that. So all we're telling you is look, get more information. And I'm going to back draw to Title 1, excuse me, Article 1, Section 1. The power is inherent in the people to be able to tell their government how to behave.
Thank you, and we'll move on.
You're welcome, and I appreciate the time.
I move now, we go into our executive session for personnel matters as pursuant to statute 164405.
A second.
It's been moved in second and two, we've been to executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So since we're out of executive session, do we now make our decision to meet on Tuesday?
Yeah.
No?
Well, you as the chairman just have to make the decision to call a meeting.
Okay.
And so I assume you'll want to call a meeting for Tuesday, the 27th, 26th?
26th.
I said it like three times.
To make our decision to meet on Tuesday.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Had the YouTube up to make sure it wasn't working. Yes. Now it's up. So, okay, so Tuesday, the 26th, 9:00 AM will be your special meeting. I'll get it noticed today.
Thank you. Homework. So, you want to open the door?
Oh, sorry. I forgot that part.
Just stuffing you. So in regard to our planning and zoning workshop where they're proposing changes, what's your advice?
What changes did they propose?
Everything.
Everything.
So basically making it illegal to put wind towers up?
You just well say we can't put wind towers.
Yeah.
You have to have a public hearing.
I mean, we would have to have public hearing to change anything, but if we do change anything, which your, would you advise against that or?
My theory is, do you have an application? We know that these people are proceeding down the road. We also know that the landowners have signed this contract and they're looking forward to maybe getting a bigger paycheck. And are you, are you basically in a weird sort of way inverse, inverse condemnation? Because as a result, you've told everybody you can't do this. So I don't, I wouldn't do it. Especially, I think if you had done this three years ago and you still might have that.
We're restricting land use specifically against one.
Example I had in northern Michigan, they basically trying to change from, it was an agricultural area where they grew cherries.
Right.
Forever. Somebody found out they could grow grapes there. Well, to make grapes profitable, they had to put in wineries. To make wineries profitable, they had to have people come to the wineries. They didn't want all those people coming, so they started passing all these rules and regs that kept, kept them from doing that.
And I know.
The market volume's still going out.
Yep.
Okay.
You're not adjourned.
And as a result, the, I know you hired Rex Johnson to help you through this, but I would guess his advice would be very similar. You put yourself in a real precarious position when you start changing it, when you know people.
Even from that example, I think you put yourself in a bad position when you change it and you don't even have an application for that.
Right.
If someday down the road, somebody wants to use their property for a reasonable purpose and you've outlawed it, then they have a case against you.
Some term is arbitrary and capricious, we here, I'm not an attorney.
But I'm just telling you, that would be a big lawsuit that.
So one of the changes is that all their components have to come from this country.
Well, good luck. We couldn't get a snowplow.
And so that's what, what I'm asking is if, if we require that of them, would we have to require that of everybody or we?
I think the other side of this, they do that because they know where their components are all built. I mean, that's just the nature of.
Did you guys read that?
You have to be more clever than that, is what I, I mean, that's what it comes down to.
Well, I mean, if we're going to do that, you know, people in Platte County are really shoeless.
It's those people down there that have made a decision that they're okay with this. Whether or not the government gives them subsidies, that's not, that's between that guy and his company and the federal government. If they're willing to build it without subsidies, more power to them. If they make that choice, more power to them.
I don't see where any part of the application to us involves how many subsidies are you getting?
Where the materials coming from, where the product sold.
No.
Or who's hired to build it or?
Cut off your nose to spite your face, I think is what the saying, how the saying goes.
Or for that matter, how much concrete they leave in the ground after they leave.
That's a land, that's a contractual obligation.
And if they've got CRP there, that's still, but that's, that's, doesn't matter. That's still a landowner's thing. If it impacts their CRP, then they know that and that's on them. I'm trying to find that because I know I read that in here. What said these materials must be US-based or US, I read it. It's in here somewhere, I remember seeing it.
Are you finding enough products made in the US, totally made in the US?
Neither says that or they say. You know what they're doing? People who are making American products, they have the requirement to be made in the US. Bring the Mexicans up and make them in the shop here instead of the shop in Mexico.
You couldn't even do that. There's no way. Well, we want a coal-fired plant. Well, you got 30 years. You couldn't build a coal-fired plant with US-based stuff. Now you couldn't, the materials are here.
At Dry Fork, because I was on the board of Wildland Municipal Power Industry and we owned part of Dry Fork and the boiler was built in China. The boiler was built in China. It had to be made out of US steel, but it was cheaper to ship US steel from here.
Over there.
Over there and have it made.
And then ship it back.
And ship it back. And they even tried to cheat you there to put in some Chinese steel. We caught them a couple of times. And most of the air pollution and air control items in Dry Fork were built in Germany. It's Germany technology built in Germany. So you, you can't build a coal-fired plant in America if they permitted it with 100% products.
That's why Jill goes, Eve says, I don't care all the time because I don't care. Where do you get the steel? That's not part of Platte County's need.
No.
I mean, so don't get into the weeds or else you'll cut your nose off to spite your face.
On the amendment, if it's across the board for industries, it's going to apply for all industries, that's one thing. Where they're making it very specific, two specific industries, it is very much targeted in a civil suit would be easy.
Yeah.
And if you made it across the board, you're going to have people say, jeez.
How do you enforce it? Next question. You don't.
Is Platte County going to hire an inspector to go out there and make sure that all the materials are coming from?
I think you run a real risk by changing your.
I, Joe Gray don't think so.
So he called me the other night.
You want to adjourn?
Do we have any further business?